Thank you. All right, welcome, everybody. We will call the meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. And the first item on the agenda, as per usual, is the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all. Before we get into the acceptance of the minutes, I just want to make a formal recognition. We have two new members on the board. Thank you both for your service with Steve Seidey and Mike Liz. I look forward to a long and industrious tenure with you. So with that welcome, we will move on to the acceptance of the minutes.
Can I make a motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
With the motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimously approved. What? I don't have anything prepared, so no, I would just fumble it. Next item on the agenda is the continued public hearing of AL Prime at 1725 Turnpike Street. You guys want to come on up?
Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals, good evening. Again, for the record, my name is Anthony Cofani. My office is located at 265 Broadway in Methorne, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, AL Prime, who's seeking relief by way of special permit and variances in order to renovate the site at 1725 Turnpike Street. And at the last meeting, we made a detailed presentation, and we received feedback from the members of the board and also from those neighbors who were present that evening. And based on that input, we've made changes to our plans. And let me just highlight the changes that you have before you. First, we've made a change to the size of the structure and the style of the structure. And Mr. Guba will come up, and he will detail those changes with particularity in a moment. But we've reduced the size of the building to 1,700 square feet. And just generally speaking, that allows us to put two handicapped, accessible restrooms at the site. And we're not really expanding much. We are expanding the retail portion of it, but we're really making it more accessible for customers to move about the aisles and so forth. But we made changes to the roof and to the siding, and that is based on the comments we heard from the abutter and the board. Secondly, the owner met with the abutter, who's the only residence that abuts a partial portion of this lot. And again, it's this section right here, and the abutter is present this evening. And hopefully, we've worked out, to his satisfaction, additional screening and timing on which the generator, which would exercise once a week, a generator would go off for a period of a half hour or 20 minutes, just to make sure that it's operating properly. We've agreed to limit that exercise period for a weekday in the afternoon. Thirdly, what we've done is we've supplemented the traffic report that we've submitted. There may have been some confusion, and this evening is Mr. John Gillen, who is our traffic specialist. His resume has been submitted, along with an additional report. The purpose of his presence this evening is to provide further analysis and, more importantly, a clarification of the traffic study that was submitted. So you will have an opportunity to meet and hear from him. And finally, I've provided a memo specifically addressing the effects of the Harrison case, which was a non-published opinion, and you can argue its persuasiveness, but it's not precedent. But it does quote the Supreme Judicial case in that opinion, which is the Rockport case, which is precedent. And I'm going to just generally comment on it because you do have a memorandum in support of my argument. And essentially, we comply. That case really helps us and not hurts us in this regard. Chapter 48, Section 6, is acknowledged by attorneys and judges alike that it's a very confusing and conflicting statute, especially the initial portions of that. And generally speaking, first of all, the town has to allow, in their ordinance, if they're going to allow changes by way of a special permit for non-conforming use of structure. Let me differentiate the case to begin with, that in the Harrison case, what the relief was requested was you had a non-conforming use, and they were requesting to change one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use. And they did that by way of special permit. Again, to make it clear, we have a conforming use. In a general business district, a fuel station and a convenience store are allowed uses as a matter of right. However, the case stands for the proposition that it's a twofold analysis. In order for us to get the relief that is necessary to make these improvements, there's a two-pronged analysis. The first is that we have to comply with the zoning, whatever change that we make to the structure, because it's a non-conforming structure, whatever change that we make to that non-conforming structure has to comply with the now existing dimensional requirements, absent a variance. And that is the key. And that is a continuation from last month's, when I said, in my opinion, we comply with Chapter 48, Section 6, because we have requested five separate variances. I began my presentation by looking at the legal notice and saying, look, when I first looked at this, I said, wow, look at all these variances we're requesting. They're pretty much the minimus in what the relief we're requesting, but there were five separate variances in order to accomplish this. That's keeping in line with the Rockport case and the Harrison case that says, once we go through that initial, that we either comply with the then-existing zoning requirements or have requested a variance and granted a variance, then the second prong is a test that is favorable to the applicant, that the board has to consider whether the change of the structure that we're looking at, because we're not looking at a change of use, whether that change is substantially more detrimental than the existing structure. And I think that, you know, applying the factors, that the board could find that we meet that test. So at this point, I will ask Mr. Guba to come before you and address the specifics of the changes that were made to the plans, and then we will hear from the traffic engineer in regards to the effect that the traffic will have on the site.
I can't. We have to compare. Just let me... Good evening. For the record, my name is Anthony Guba. I'm an employee of AL Prime, professional engineer in the state of Massachusetts, and a person who prepared these plans. Following the last hearing, we made the building smaller. Basically, the building is 30 percent smaller than we originally proposed. We took the building about five feet cut on the length of it and about two feet cut on the depth of it. We kept the front of the building and the side facing 114 at where that corner, this corner, was. Previously, we did not move that. So all of the reduction in the size of the building was to the benefit of the setback from the rear line and the setback to the sideline. So the setback on the rear line went from about 14 feet to about 19 feet. Both of them will have an additional fraction, but it's about five feet more than it was previously.
Can I just correct you?
Yes.
You went from 19, almost 2,000 square feet, to 1,700 square feet?
Yes.
Is that 30 percent?
I'm sorry, that's 15 percent.
Okay.
300 square feet, yep, out of the 2,000. It's 15 percent, yes. And so the back line, the setback from the rear line, went from 14 and change to 19 and change. And the setback on the sideline went from three feet to just over five feet. We relocated the trash enclosure and the generator further from the property line, and we're showing some additional landscaping in behind those, along with fencing to screen that. And we've also offered to provide some sound insulation around the generator area. Basically, the parking in front of the building is in the same place, and the proposed dispensers are in the same place. Now, one of the things that the board asked that we do was to analyze and take a look at the possibility of relocating the dispensers from the proposed location that we had stacked behind the existing three dispensers. So I think initially, the idea was to try to put, instead of having them here, put them here, and then possibly move the driveway, the southern driveway, further south, closer to the south property line. So we looked at this layout here, and first of all, it would move the driveway within the required, we'd need another variance in order to locate the driveway in that area. Secondly, doing that, this is a typical auto term with that vehicle that would be parked at this dispenser, being able to get out of the site. You can see, we'd have to move the driveway to within 20 feet of that sideline, probably a little bit more to make it actually work comfortably. And that would eliminate being able to put any parking at that end of the property, and it would also eliminate being able to put the building at that end of the property. So we said, okay, well, if we do that, where can we put the parking and where can we put the building? So we started to look at, can we turn the building and put it up in this area? Can we move the building over here? Is it possible to extend the existing building? We worked to all the different possibilities of how we could possibly make it work. And in the end, we basically said, it really doesn't work. We won't be able to do that and make the project work. So from our standpoint, that would not be a viable option that we would be able to agree to. We then took a look at moving the dispensers. It was suggested possibly putting one at either end of the existing line or putting two between the three gas dispensers and the diesel-only dispenser at the end of, under the separate canopy at the north end of the property. So similarly, we went through, taking a look at, if we did that, this one here, we could keep the building, we could keep the parking as we're proposing it, but just instead of having the dispensers here, have them here. That was probably the one that would possibly work the best for us, but that would also create some other problems. For example, we've got larger vehicles that are using the diesel-only island, and a lot of those vehicles, after they fill up, especially if they're on the inside lane, will then try to move between the two canopies to the outside lane to be able to pull out of the station, rather than pull up and go between, on the backside of the three gasoline fueling areas. Putting these dispensers here would probably eliminate that possibility for most larger vehicles to do that. And that includes even landscaper vehicles that are towing a trailer. So from that standpoint, we would say that that option really doesn't work either from a site circulation standpoint. Now, the other thing to look at when we start putting all the dispensers in a line is that one of the things that makes the layout that we want to use with the dispensers this way is that it's difficult when you have a dispenser fueling position open in the middle of the other dispensers. For someone, if there's someone fueling here and someone fueling here, you have to peril park, basically, to get to that dispenser, and it becomes very hard for someone to get to it. By doing this, where it's a lot easier for vehicles to access the dispensers, there's better circulation on the site, and a lot less unsafe movements of people trying to back up or jockey to get to a fueling position. So from that standpoint, we think that's a superior layout also. So we basically came back to say, our original layout for the site, which wasn't just one option, I mean, we worked through a lot of stuff previously in order to get to this, to figure out what we thought was the best layout. We basically reaffirmed what we originally thought was our best layout and came back with the dispensers in the same location that we had previously. And I know you said you didn't want to see the same thing, but we don't think that trying to move would in any way improve the layout. It would be something that we would think would make it worse, so. As far as the building itself, we originally had our standard flat roof, single-story building with split-faced block and a yellow band all the way around it, and there was a lot of issues with that not fitting into the character of North Andover. So it was suggested to try to make the building look, especially from the south and west side, to make it look a lot more residential. So if you take a look at these two elevations on the bottom, this is the one that's facing away from 114, and this is the one that's facing south to the vacant commercial property that is being, that you're familiar with due to another petition. I think we've tried to make those look like they would fit more into a residential or into, you know, the New England character. The side facing the gasoline, the fueling areas, and the side facing 114 maintain that same character, but have a little bit more of a commercial look to them. Obviously, it is a commercial use, so we're trying not to make it completely look like a house. We're going with the pitched roof, and it looks like a pitched roof, except that this is really a very deep mansard, and it's going to allow us to have a flat section of roof up top, where you will not be able to see any of the refrigeration equipment. So we're not going to put it on a pad on the ground, and we're not going to put it on a roof where you can see it. It'll actually be down inside here, where it'll be completely screened from all sides. The access for that would be in the back, and that access would be hidden from the residential property, the abutting residential property by this dormer. The windows on the south side of the building and on the west side of the building would be fake windows. There's nothing, you know, there's a walk-in cooler, and there's nothing on the second floor that's just framing, so those would all be basically fake windows to give it the appearance of that kind of a structure, where there's really nothing behind it. One of these windows here may be a real window, because it's at the end, if you look at the floor plan, it's at the end of the hallway. The other one would be a fake window. This would all be live storefront windows facing the fueling islands.
What's the facade material?
It would be a clapboard finish. We're suggesting hardy plank. It would be a light gray or a white color on the planking. We would have a yellow band around the building and some, and this right here, as you can see from here, and it's kind of out here a little bit, is a flat awning that would be suspended out from the front of the building. That would be blue. If that's something that the board feels is heading in the right direction, but maybe not quite there yet, we could tweak it a little bit more, but we think it, I think, we're thinking it's pretty attractive at this point, and if you're happy with it, we can refine the details on it.
What's the, just a clarification, I don't necessarily see down the elevations, but certainly on the floor plan, there's a transaction drawer. Is that something you're facing?
Yeah, that would be right here. That transaction drawer is right here, you're seeing it on the plan. Basically, that's just, sometimes when we're operating in difficult weather or if it's a single employee at a time of the evening or early morning when it's dark out and they don't open the front door, they can do a transaction through that drawer without allowing the customer to come into the building. If for some reason the store is closed or limited access, but we're still open for gas, that would become a transaction point.
Any questions or carry on to the traffic? Unless you have anything else, I'm not trying to cut you off.
I think that pretty much covers...
I will thank you for doing the different diagrams. I know that was something I had asked for, so I appreciate that you redid that for me.
Okay, great. Jack, did you want something left there?
Thinking about it, I could talk a little bit about, if you were to pull those up once again, but this is fine. Good evening, board members. My name's Jack Gillen. I should probably give my real name. John Thomas Gillen. I am a professional engineer registered in the state of Massachusetts. Since I haven't been before this board, and as long as I can remember, I might have been here, I'll give you a quick breakdown of where I am. I started engineering field back in 1967. I was working with United Engineers and Constructors in Boston, Jackson and Warland Television, and I started working with just the traffic back in '71 with the town of Brookline. I had been director of traffic and parking for the town of Brookline, director of traffic and parking for the city of Quincy, and director of traffic engineering and management for the city of Boston. I'm past president of the Institute of Transportation Engineers Mass chapter, and I've been wing the section as well. I'm also consulting traffic engineer for Muffin County. I've had my own firm since 1982, and I've been reviewing traffic as well, preparing with traffic. My kids all went to private schools. My middle boy finally graduated Marsham Med School last month, so I'm happy. That's over. Anyway, so I've been doing a lot of traffic, and my dad told me to plan traffic when he was, so it really worked out well. Anyways, what I'd like to do is go through quickly with one scenario, and so that we understand, and then we can elaborate. I don't want to waste time that might be better served by people that have something to say or want to question us, as long as I'm here tonight. I look, as you know by now, the Institute of Transportation Engineers has a trip generation manual. The new one just came out last April, I believe it was, and they have a scatter diagram where people all over the country will look at how many vehicle fueling positions, and then they'll measure that against trips. Then you'll take these different points on all that graph with an X and Y axis, and they throw an equation right straight through all those scattergrams, you know? And then that's supposed to give you, if you're doing a brand-new gas station and there was not one there before, how many fueling positions you're going to have. You draw that up, you hit that line, and bring that over, and it'll tell you the number of trips and all of that. It really doesn't do that well if you have an existing gas station, you're making changes to it. So that's with the understanding, and I'm just going to run through what we saw based on the straight-line equation that the ITE uses. The projected, we'll stay with the morning peak hour, for example, the projected is 244, and the existing is 162. I know you have a lot of this stuff in front of you, but I can come back to it. And that meets the increase, about 82. The Institute of Transportation Engineers also has a companion book that looks at the pass-by trips depending on the use. For example, gas stations have a very high pass-by, and most people don't go to the gas station, get gas, and drive back home again. And it'll usually be combined with a work trip or a supermarket trip or a medical trip or something like that, most of the time. There are some that, oh my God, it's going to rain, I'll go make that trip, fill the tank, and then come back home again. So they do that. But the pass-by is 60 percent in the morning peak hour, and it's 55 percent during the evening peak hour. This is based on studies that the Institute of Transportation Engineers had done. And then we'll, so out of the increase of 82, the pass-by is 50. That'll give you the new driveway trips of 32. Now, every trip is measured, if it's going into the gas station or coming out of the gas station. So as far as the vehicles on the roadway, two trips in and out is one vehicle. So the 32, if we're talking about a vehicle that's new on the roadway that come out, you know, from the 32, that goes down to 16 new vehicles on the roadway in the morning peak hour, 20 new vehicles on the roadway in the evening peak hour, based on that straight-line rate. Now, from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, we did get some volumes out there on Route 114. It handles about 22,900 in the morning, 2,000, I mean, throughout the day, weekday, 2,000 in the morning peak hour, and about 1,750 in the evening peak hour. And since that evening peak hour is actually a little bit less than the morning peak hour, the percentage increase is a little bit more. So what we saw was, in the, over the course of one weekday, the traffic that would be increased on Route 114 is 0.7 percent, less than 1 percent new traffic on Route 114. And the morning peak hour is 0.8 percent, less than 1 percent. And then the evening peak hour is 1.1 percent increase of traffic on Route 114. Now, one of the reasons that I suspect the trips are a little bit less on 114 in evening peak hour than the morning, see, I've been working in Brookline, Boston, and Quincy, so most of hours were a bit higher in the evening peak hour, because all the retail stores would be open, you know, and everything else, so you'd have a higher than evening peak hour. But here, I'm guessing you're ganging the work trips with the kids that are going to college and schools and buses and all of that out on the roadway. So I'm guessing that's why your morning peak hour was a little bit higher than your evening peak hour. It's a little bit unusual, but not unique. So that's what it was. Now, the, after your last meeting, Mr. Guba asked me, he says, are we talking straight-line? Are we going to have that much increase? I said, no, as a matter of fact, the ITE community, all traffic engineers throughout the country, we've been wrestling with this, and we know that it's not related to one variable, like the number of fueling positions. So they've been saying that you really should consider, find a way to consider other variables, such as the competition, the number of stations in an area, or the traffic volumes on the roadway. If you're only having like 10,000 cars a day, or if another roadway is carrying 35,000 cars a day, you'd suspect that you'd have a few more gas station trips at the higher volume, but they don't consider that either, and the price of the gas station. I was on the, I did a peer review down in Norwood, and the fellow's putting in a BJ's gas station, which keeps their gas way down below anybody within eight miles, and I had them take a look at another BJ's and four more average those, and that's what they used. So price does make a difference when you're taking a look at these. Matter of fact, I came up here tonight, and I come up, I live in Waymouth now, so I was coming up, and I would buy a Cumberland Farm. I guess they used to carry the Gulf gas station, I don't know, in Middleton, Middle, and they had a whole lot of fueling positions there, and they had a larger store, and it was wide open, and easy to get in and around and out everything else. I'm guessing that with them on that side of the street, don't take it the wrong way, but I don't think you're going to have the evening peak hour as much as you're going to have the morning peak hour, you know, because they're going to be coming back that way on Route 114, and if it's on that side of the street and the prices are comparable, they might go to that one. Now, he might have, if people are low on gas, they might take his in the morning if they're headed down to his Route 1 and into Boston, that area. So the ITE doesn't consider all of these things, you know? So it's just that, this is a snapshot, and you're going to have to, some of it's common sense, some of it's based on years and years. I made a living out of this, you know? way in Route 114, and if it's on that side of the street and the prices are comparable, they might go to that one. Now, he might have, if people are low on gas, they might take his in the morning if they're headed down to his Route 1 and into Boston, that area. So the ITE doesn't consider all of these things, you know? So it's just that, this is a snapshot, and you're going to have to, some of it's common sense, some of it's based on years and years. I made a living out of this, you know? So we take a look at it, and I take it serious, I do use the ITE, and it has stood up in court and all of that, but you do have to consider your own profession, and you know that there's latitude that you use. This would usually be the case, but in this case, this here is overriding, let's take a look at that. But you have a snapshot based on what I'm told to use in order to keep my license and my stamp, you know? So we do it that way, but I'm here tonight to say I'm wrong. So it's like, all of the stuff didn't consider these other things, and if you add a more fueling position, it would help during the evening peak hour, obviously, and possibly during the morning peak hour. Like, if you know you're in a hurry and you see an open pump that you can get to, then you might intend to use it rather than look for another gas station. But if it's taken up, then you may not, you know? And you're not increasing the number of the traffic on the street because most people, ITE says, that most of its, two-thirds of them are pretty much pass-by trips. They're out there anyways, you know? So, let's see now, I just wanted to say, like, in conclusion, adding the two double dispensers won't double the number of trips, and the expected new vehicle trips on Route 14 will be de minimis, and it really won't be all that noticeable. You know, I wanted to talk, I'm not prepared to it, but I'm going to talk about it anyways because when, in my other positions in Brookline, Quincy, and Boston, we looked at pedestrian crashes too. We used to call them accidents when I was a kid, never called them crashes. A lot of the pedestrian accidents were within parking lots, people in Dunkin' Donuts walking into the store, someone else backing up, and we didn't have all the cameras and buzzers and everything else when I was a kid, you know? But now they do. But a lot of the pedestrian accidents happen in parking lots. And one of the things you have to consider here is that for every person you have with a vehicle, for every vehicle, you have pedestrian, right? Because he's out of the car and he's in there. So if you have, these all stacked up with five of them, you're going to have to, like we're saying, you're going to have to parallel park, because you have to back into that and then pull out if there's somebody on the end. So you're going to have more pedestrians, and you're going to have vehicles making maneuvers that you otherwise may not have to have if you separate them out. And the other thing I was talking about with these is that you pull the queuing, and the queuing won't extend because they, well, I don't want parallel parks, I'm going to wait for that one to get off, you know? So you end up, by doing something like this, you're pulling the queue away from Route 114, you have less of a chance that you're going to have any issue like that. I know you have a whole lot of people, and I'm going to be here for a while, so if you have any questions or follow-up after the people, then we can do that.
I have some questions, so can you just?
Whatever you want.
So the source data that you got from ITE, what year is that? That's the 10th edition, but what year was that pulled from?
This is the new one. This is IT Trip Generation 10. So that was this year.
2018, or, because I know the mass.
I think it came out in 2017, but they don't come out every year. So this is the very latest one that's out.
And can you talk about, are you, did you do the research on the curb cut, reducing it to 30% too, or is that someone else, or is that part of?
I looked at the numbers and things, it was flex at the time, everything, we might do this and might do that, and I guess the.
My question is, should I direct my question to you regarding the curb cut in that parking spot and the flow of traffic there, or would it be someone else that?
Well, probably Tony, because he located the parking.
All right, then we can come back to that.
I don't have a problem if you want to address the fact, the point that I made, and you can extend on it, is that we're showing 32 feet from the back of the parking space at the beginning of that, and that's basically what I need to be able to get someone to safely make this turn and not interfere with that parking space. So that's where that, that's where that whole comes from. And I think that's what you're asking for.
Yeah, and that's safely, I mean, if you have the scenario of someone parked there, someone on the right, someone on the left, someone coming in, which is a possible scenario, is that enhancing safety, or is that?
We could probably show you a template showing that it can make it like that, that it does work.
You know, for me, templates and numbers and on charts and on paper might look great, but the reality of it, I mean, if you have the worst-case scenario, if all those things happen, is that, is there restriction there?
Well, like I say, one of the things that we've done, in fact, you showed the truck turning template, right?
We didn't put a truck term, we didn't show that one.
Well, they know that they did, and make sure the fueling truck could get in there and get out of there. So one of the things we could do is.
I wouldn't think a fueling truck could get in there if someone's parked in there, if someone has to, the fueling truck will have to go on the other side.
Well, sometimes you'll do the trip off-peak or something like that, mid-morning, mid-afternoon or something, I don't know.
Right.
Well, sometimes we don't do it at night if it's in our neighborhoods, but it's up to.
I guess your question is whether or not we're creating a conflict point right here between people trying to back out, people trying to pull in, and maybe someone who's trying to turn in.
Correct.
But basically, it's not any different than it is now. The majority of the customers use this driveway to enter and use this driver to leave, and that's the same thing you find at most facilities. That's the same thing you find even at fast-food restaurants and most other locations. It's a counterclockwise move to the location, and that's a lot, is driven a great deal by the fact that the primary traffic that's going to use the station is southbound traffic. So what, someone who's coming by will use the first driveway rather than drive by. If they forget, maybe they'll pull in, but most people will use this driveway. There's a lower percentage of people who make a left turn in, they'll probably use this driveway more at this particular location because this driveway is a little bit easier to access. We do have a lot of left turns in at this driveway also. So this conflict point, this is not any different basically than we have today. We have parking, if you can see the shadow, we have parking right there right now. This dispenser is not being moved or changed. So the conflict between this parking, this dispenser, and that driveway is exactly the way it is today.
Oh, I don't think so, because you're doing the 50-foot curb cut to 30 feet, and you're adding a parking spot, you're adding a building. There's big differences. I don't see it as being similar, but.
The back of this parking is right here. It's only a couple, you know, five.
It's a 9 by 20 parking spot, I think it read, by, which is our code is 9 by 18. So, I mean, you could have an SUV in there, so you gotta, so that's the possibility.
Well, I think that the difference is, I agree with you, with you, Ellen. There's a very big difference, particularly when you're putting the retail store is in that entrance for crying out loud. In the current configuration, spaces one and two are essentially a dead zone, like people just kind of stand there in their vehicles, is what I mean. The vehicles stand there as they're, I don't know, checking their GPS or their phone after they dispense their gas. So there's not really a backing in or a backing out in the current configuration where space one and two is. So I agree, Ellen, that the dynamic here is extraordinarily different with the relocation of the store itself. Is it, you know, is it fatal? You know, I'm not sure that it's fatal, but it's still real.
I mean, this is the same configuration that you'll find at gas stations everywhere.
But gas stations everywhere are not here tonight, so.
Well, I understand, but I mean, this is, this is not something that we've squeezed and done something new. This is something that people, customers are familiar with. This is something that's proven at other locations. We have dozens of locations that have the same kind of configuration, and it operates without any problems, without any traffic situations or any accidents on-site. This whole layout is very similar to what we've done at a lot of other locations, and it's not a problem. We find that when you talk about customers using the store, especially a store this small, more than half the customers are parked at the dispensers. They don't pull up here to park because there's very few customers that come to this location to go to the store only. They park, they get their gas, they walk in, they get their can of soda or chips, and then they walk back to their car, and that car never gets parked in that spot.
I did studies on that, I've got other gas stations and found that most people that they get in doubt, because they leave the car at the pump, they go get the, they go back to the car, I believe, you know? He knows the site traffic, I just, they asked me to talk to you about the off-site.
If I might ask regarding the traffic, do you have any numbers as to how many people come in and use the pumps as they're configured now in the morning and the evening traffic hours?
I don't have those numbers.
Okay. Okay, because it would be helpful to know that maybe, and also just how many, like, how often, how long you have a backup that comes out of the pumps for? You know, is it 20 minutes every day? Is it none? Is it half an hour? What is it? Do you have any idea?
I don't have that information.
Okay.
Anything else percolating for the members of the board?
Mr. Gouba, am I saying right?
Yes, sir.
Could I ask you a question, please? To be honest with you, I'm up in the air about this current design. Was there any consideration given to expanding the existing building?
Yeah, we did, we did take a look at that. Part of the, and you can see the building outline here. We did take a look at that. Did you have a specific question? I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah, no, no, you know, I'm sitting here, and I'm sure like some of the other board members, it's hard for me to swallow five feet setbacks, you know what I mean? You know, from the real lot line, that they should be, you know, much larger. And I'm, and I know it's a pre-existing application, okay? Okay, I know it's there, and I know it's not going to go away, and I'm saying, how can we make it best? Okay, in someone's mind, how can we make? I don't think that is the best that we can do. If we could maybe expand, and I'm only one vote, I'm only just a lone voice up here, okay? Maybe I'm the crazy one. If we could expand the existing structure, and that way we don't have a wall against the abutment, we don't have a wall looking at everybody, and the way it looks now, you know, Ellen, where's the pictures you had? Okay? Not that I'm an architect, but I can see how this works, okay? If you expanded the buildings on either side, okay, you get your more retail space. Could you put a dispenser, because now the buildings aren't there, to the left of the three dispensers you have now?
Okay, so this.
Okay, now, I'm not doing your job, I'm just saying, can we just, and if you can't do it, maybe I'm the crazy one, you know what I'm trying to say?
Well, no, no, you're not crazy. I totally understand, we took a look at that. I mean, if we could save money by trying to renovate and expand an existing building and not have to tear it down and build a brand-new building, we certainly would do that. I mean, we're not in the business of trying to just spend money on new buildings if we don't have to. So we certainly looked at that as a possibility. Part of the problem is, is that building predates our ownership. That building's really old, and structurally it's not in great shape. If you take a look at the configuration of that system, that building, there's no way we could make the building deeper. So you're talking about adding an addition at either end and making it longer.
What if you knocked down and built a new one? You're going to build a new one anyways over here, right?
That would take care of the structural part of the question.
Because you've already committed to building a new one.
But now you're talking about taking a building and creating a bowling alley. And one of the things that we're trying to do in this building, right now, if you go in there, you'll notice that we have a lot of reach-in coolers. Basically, it's like a refrigerator, you open the door and you get your cooler out. And now, when you stock that, you have to open the door, you have to pull your stuff to the front, put your new stock in the back of it, and now that creates a much more of a task for the employee. It also not only takes a lot more time, but reduces the amount of product that you can store with inside that cooler. It also is much less energy efficient because now you've got a refrigerator with its own condenser and its own heat pump inside the building, and you've got, you know, six of them as opposed to having one in a large walk-in. So one of the things that we're trying to do is create a walk-in. So when you take a look at, for example, the space allocation in the building, right now, inside that building, we've got 61% of the space in that building is devoted to area that the customer can touch, retail area. In the proposed building, only 41% of the area is retail area. So what we've done is we've disproportionately expanded storage area, mechanical area, bathroom area, the manager's office, and the area behind the counter where the attendant is located to give those functions better efficiency and better operation. We have a walk-in cooler that's eight feet deep as opposed to a reach-in like a refrigerator that's only 30 inches deep. We now have room to have a rack that has the product on it, and instead of trying to reach in the door and change product, the attendant can actually go inside and put more product on the back and not have to move anything. The new product is in the back and feeds automatically into the, into the door, the cooler. And now we also have room in the back of that cooler, if you have an extra case of Coke or whatever it is, you can put it on the floor in the back of that cooler, it's already chilled, so that now you can put it up front onto the rack. So those kind of things help us operate that store a lot more efficiently. We have fewer trucks making delivery to the location to bring that kind of stuff, which is the hardest to handle. It's the pop and the soda and the iced tea and the, you know, 15 different flavors of water. So that's, that's the major thing as we're taking, taking a look at a walk-in cooler. That walk-in cooler, to make it work right, needs to be eight feet deep. If I try to put an eight-foot-deep walk-in cooler inside a store that's only as deep as the existing store, I don't have any room to put anything in front of that cooler.
Why can, why can, let's concede you're going to build a new building.
Okay.
And the only question is where? Okay?
Correct.
Do we build a new building as you're proposing here? Or do we knock down the old building and build a new building in its place except it's expanded? And the width is expanded so you can accommodate all of the problems you just described?
Right now, this building's only five feet off the property line. We're increasing that by 400 times.
Yeah, but it's pre-existing.
To the new building.
I understand that, but right now, we're not taking, we're not making it any worse. See, to me, you're making it worse over there. See, to me, once you knock that down, do we break, you know, the you-know-whats and say, we want you to conform to the current zoning? Because now we have the right to. The other was pre-existing.
No, I understand that. But like I'm saying, we're increasing the setback of the building from the residential zone from five feet to 20 feet.
But it's in a different place. It's now next to an actual abutment rather than the State Forest.
Right.
But it's still all-zone residential.
And it is next to an actual abutment, but the actual abutment's over 100 feet away. And we're only talking about this particular, this section is the only part with that abutment above us. And we'll work with that abutment as far as.
Now, how do you know there's not going to be something to the left of it?
We can't control that. That's another, that could be another business. I think the proposal wasn't to have parking and stuff here. So we're not, we're not so worried about screening ourselves from another business. I'm not sure they're worried that we're screening ourselves from another business. It's how we're screening ourselves from the residential use, and we're trying to do that by preventing a building that has a similar type of character to it, that will not have any lighting or signage or glaring colors to it, and that will have a shape that is something that, when you're looking out your window, is much better than what is there now, which is probably, you know, the only other option to what we're presenting now, is leave it the way it is or do this. And we think we're making a big improvement on it.
On Alan's, I think what Alan's saying also, I'm sure you're going to correct me, but instead of having the two pumps, possibly the one pump, and keep the building where it is? And going from four, from six to five, and then expand on where the building is, tweak it, make it a little bigger, make it, instead of having the building right in your face? Do you know what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. I think in order to make the investment in that building, to make the building better, we really need to go, we can leave it the way it is before we spend a little bit of money and not do anything with the property.
And just for the record, I go to, this would be the only store around in quite some way sometime. I go to a store, and I don't always get gas, especially at Middleton Center. I go to that Richdale, and I'm not always getting gas. I pull in to go.
Okay, so now that Richdale Center, do you, that has a subway, I think?
No.
Or it used to?
Middleton, I'm sorry.
Middleton Center? There's a Richdale, it's across the street from the new Cumberland?
Yep.
Doesn't it have a Dunkin' Donuts?
They do have a Dunkin'.
They have a Dunkin' Donuts?
Correct.
Okay, so, I mean, we're talking about a different store. That store's bigger than what we're proposing.
I'm just telling you, there's people who go to a gas station, who will go to this mini-mart to go to the store, not just get gas.
I'm not saying that nobody does, I'm saying the preponderance of customers.
I'm one of them.
Do you go there just for a pack of gum or a Coke or something?
I would, yeah.
Okay.
It's my way to work.
So you're the minority for what we see in our, most of our customers. I didn't say that doesn't happen, I'm just saying the preponderance of customers don't go that way.
There's a possibility that that might increase because there's more. There's a possibility that that might increase because there's more to offer in the store as well.
Oh, sure.
The lottery, the, you know.
Oh, sure. I do it myself. I, I mean, I'm, that's what I'm saying, it's not-
So you're a minority too?
I am a minority. When I leave this hearing, when I leave a hearing like this late at night and I need a drink, but my car's full of gas, I might stop and get a Coke just to drink on my way home. So yes, that does happen, but it's not the common, it's not normal.
So on the, so it wouldn't be profitable to have five as opposed to six stations, is what?
Oh, from a gas, from a fueling position standpoint? We think that any increase in the fueling, number of fueling positions would improve the queuing and the, the effectiveness. But we don't think that the layout and trying to extend it at one end or the other would work from a traffic standpoint.
I'm just saying one instead of two.
Even one, I mean, it just, it just, that configuration of having the dispensers in a line, it just doesn't really work very well for most customers. That's the main reason that we're trying to put dispensers in the back is so that they're, they're stacked as opposed, if we could, a lot of marketers now use what's called a starting gate, where you only have one dispenser in a line and you put 10 of them side by side along a long way. And that's so that no one ever has to be in front over behind another customer. They can, you can just pull in. And, and that is really considered the most efficient way to get a customer through because they don't have to, they don't have to rely on someone else getting out of their way.
Anything else percolating?
I see a broom.
All right. Well, you're not foregoing every chance, we'll, we'll certainly have more opportunity. So at this point, invite anybody from the gallery who is interested in being heard, speaking, saying anything, asking questions. And just remind everybody that when you approach the podium, please introduce yourself, your name and your address. And any comments, questions or concerns, please address them to the board and we will get them fielded by the applicant if so needed.
Hi, Chris Carter, 15 Colonial Ave. I'm the abutment. So I'd just like to clarify the opening statement by Mr. Capani. I did meet with the business owner and we met at the station. And we did discuss possible solutions to the complaints that I have. We didn't formally agree upon anything. But my interpretation from Mr. Capani's statement was that we did agree upon something, but we had not, we just, I brought up issues that I have with the current station as well as the proposed. So a lot of them are the same, lights are on, sound's traveling, I can see the property very well, day and night. So those are things that we addressed and they've, sounds like they've agreed to implement some of that if things change. Based on the new changes, it sounds like the refrigerant on the roof could be a lot of sound carrying over. I don't know the exact distance, Mr. Guba said that I'm about 100 feet away. That could be true, I don't know the exact numbers, but I am in my backyard. If I'm back there and I hear a refrigerator every single time I'm back there, that's not a good ideal situation. Thing's not up there, but, you know, the, it sounds like it was like set in, maybe the sound carries up, but that would be a main concern I have. I appreciate the measures that they're willing to take with blocking the sound at the generator. Didn't, doesn't sound like it got moved at all, same with the dumpster. But I do appreciate the adding of fences and bushes and maybe accommodating some lighting changes to the current situation. Again, not much has changed in the plan, so, you know, what I said last time, I think, still goes and sounds like the board has kind of shared my opinions on things, so I won't continue with that, but that's all I had.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You're a direct abutment.
Yes.
And I want you to look at this with an open mind. It's already pre-existing. It's already there, we're not going to take it away. You understand that?
Correct.
Okay. He wants to make it better. What would you suggest?
I don't mind it being improved upon.
What was that?
I don't mind it being improved upon.
How would you, if you were sitting in my chair, how would you steer the conversation?
I don't know, I think it's a tough position you guys are in. I, I fortunately just get to advise of my opinion. But, you know, they're asking for a lot of changes. And I think that, you know, a better-looking store would look better, but maybe not there. I, I kind of agree with Alan's point that change was there.
It's there.
Make it look nicer.
Yeah.
Fix it.
How can we make it look nicer without upsetting all the neighbors?
I'm not an engineer, I don't know.
Another question would be, you know, given that you are, you hear refrigeration now, you said, and-
No, that was proposed.
Okay, okay, I thought you said that you heard.
It's going to be-
So you don't hear now?
They're saying it's going to be on the roof right here.
Right. But so, but you don't hear from where it is now?
They have them inside the store, they said.
Okay, okay. And so do you feel that what's been proposed here would be substantially worse that, as a neighbor experience for you than what was, what is there currently?
I think so.
Okay.
Just being so close to my property, they have added some accommodations with trying to block sound and locked lights and stuff, and I appreciate that, but those are current problems as well. So I feel like that's kind of a separate issue to discuss almost, you know? Whether they change it or not, I want them to put up some blockage and turn the lights on in the evening and et cetera.
But they may not do that unless they get what they want here.
Correct. But I'm dealing with it right now. And, you know, I can put a fence up or something, so. But again, to answer your question, I think, you know, there are some changes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask Mr. Guba a question?
Let's, let the, let the line go and then we'll certainly come back to the applicant. I imagine that we're all going to have more questions for, for the applicant.
Hi, my name is Lana Gill. I'm a direct abutment on the other side of the street, sorry. I don't think, is the sun?
There's not amplification, that is merely for the record. That's just for a recording. There are no speakers in here that amplify.
Okay, I'll speak up, that's why I thought it was on. So my name, I can, I can speak up now. My name is Lana Gill and I'm the direct abutment on the other side of the neighborhood. So I'm at 10 Colonial Ave. As you enter the neighborhood, Chris is on the right, I'm on the left. So I'm the first house into the neighborhood. You know, I worry that, I moved in six years ago, I worry that the appearance and the feel of where I live is changing. I got hit with Berry Street, I was the direct abutment, Vergato's, you know, this. I have a feeling that, you know, across the street is going to be happening something with the Girl Scout place. I just feel like it's been never-ending meetings and I'm somehow always direct abutment. You know, ever since, Paul, you said that I'm going to be turning that left and looking at that building, you know, blocking the view. And I remember you said, all, all I can envision every time I'm making a turn is that big building kind of in my face. I'm in mid, and, you know, we, I know this is a separate issue, but for me, it's the same. We're getting hit with two projects at the same time. All the greenery, I know that they're making it look really bad right now because nobody wants, everybody wants to see weeds and it's, it looks really bad, so people are going to come and save the day, you know, going to clean it up. It wasn't always like that, it was great, but people are making it look bad because they want, you know, even the gas station used to be nicely landscaped in, they don't, they haven't been landscaping it for three months now. So all the pretty flowers they used to keep, keep up with is not there anymore. I know everything, you know, they're trying to present this. There's, I worry about safety, I worry about noise, I worry about how long these projects are going to take to build, I worry about what is it going to look like? Are the trees all going to be done? You know, am I going to just directly see these buildings, you know? I see cars falling up in front of my house and people can say what, what they want about traffic. Studies, I have a direct study in front of me, people are piling in in front of my house. I wait for them to, you know, leave, to back up. I, you know, it takes a long time to take a left. There's that middle lane that is really dangerous if people don't use appropriately, you know? And we will be adding probably with Vergato's, another exit, so that's going to be impacting. People absolutely use both ways, in and out, both ways. There's no like one going in one way or out, they're going both ways. This project is just too big for the space. I know we're comparing it to other gas stations, but other gas stations have more exit, more space. I think the gas station was lucky enough to have the original space as it was, you know? That's just my opinion. I, I do agree with Alan that, you know, if you expand on what it is and maybe make it something, you know, existing, that might work, but that huge building, I don't, you know, I don't see how it's going to work. I worry about people, you know, kids gathering there, there's absolutely people are going to be pulling in and grabbing stuff without getting gas. I do it myself, I'm the minority as well. Apparently, we all are. So I, I'm just concerned, like, I'm just a neighbor that's just been dealing with this. I don't want to come to these meetings anymore as much as you do, but it's just been never-ending and I'm just exhausted from this. I just, you know, I just wish there was a solution and I understand it's people's lives and businesses, but I, I just think it's too much for that space. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Laura Delmarco. I live at 74 Colonial Ave. And I am up here because I agree with everything Lana said and I'm not going to repeat it because I don't want any eye-rolling and all of that. I do have a letter that was produced by Caroline Castaldo, who lives at, I believe, 65 Colonial Ave. And I didn't know if you need me to read it out loud, hopefully not, because I prefer not to, but I will if I need to.
I don't, it's not necessarily, it was an invitation, actually, so that Caroline could have her voice heard, you know?
Right.
In the meeting, on the record, on the tape, all that kind of stuff without her necessarily being there.
Well, I don't want to deprive her of that opportunity.
So the board would certainly appreciate if you would, if you wouldn't mind.
I'll give it a shot. Okay. Caroline writes, Dear zoning board members, because I was unable to attend tonight's meeting due to travel, I wanted to reiterate my concerns about the scope of the prime project as presented at the meeting on August 14th. I am hoping you each had time to review the handouts I submitted at the 814 meeting about the non-conforming structures. One being a review of what constitutes a non-conformity and the other was a mass appellate court decision on this topic. The case which cited is Harrison versus St. Pierre, 84 Mass Appellate Court. These handouts highlight that in order to allow to change these non-conforming constructions, they must meet the two standards as stated in the decision from Harrison v. St. Pierre. One, the extension of the non-conformity conforms with the zoning board of appeals bylaws, and if variances are needed, these variances must be strictly and selectively granted as all variances should. Two, the change in the structure must not be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. Finally, structure should not adversely affect the land and its surroundings. Profitability is also never a reason to allow all this significant change. Upon proper review, I think we can find many similarities in this case and the project before us. The mass appellate court ruled against a substantial change of the non-conforming structure and I urge the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals to rule the same in this case. I think we can all agree, as was voiced at the meeting on 814, that the proposed prime project was far too expansive for the lot in this area of Route 114. Profitability cannot be grounds to allow changes to the successful existing business as these changes would be detrimental to the neighborhood. Small changes and our expansion to the existing structure and pumps would be reasonable. I truly appreciate the time everyone has put into these meetings and hope as a town we can make decisions that are best for the entire community of North Andover. Sincerely, Caroline Castaldo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We won't ask you any questions about her letter.
Okay, thanks a lot, I'd certainly not be a part of it.
Is there anyone else?
Hello, I'm Catherine Kendrick and I live on 20 Colonial Avenue, which is right next door to Lana. And I agree with everything that Lana and Vanessa have said so far. I'm very concerned because I don't really think a lot of the issues in terms of safety and traffic have really been addressed. These are very small changes that were presented tonight and I think what prime is asking for are major variance changes and I think they are going to negatively impact the neighborhood. When I come home every night at around 6 o'clock and I'm getting ready to make that right turn to go home every night, I am literally petrified that somebody is going to hit me from behind. They go so fast on that street and even when I put on my signal, I really feel like a lot of people might plow into me because they're not paying attention, there's too many cars coming and going. And quite honestly, I don't really think we have had a really good answers to the questions about traffic. I don't feel they were able to answer the questions about how many cars are there now exiting and coming every day. So I don't really feel like, you know, we have real good answers to those questions. And I think that the major expansion and changes that they want are only going to exacerbate a really bad situation that there's currently there. So I'm really very concerned and I also think the new site that they're proposing is really not that attractive. I think having that yellow band is certainly not something that is going to improve the look of the facility. And it sounds like they're making very small changes to the concerns that we've all expressed and that it's all based on not being more profitable. I think Lana mentioned, it's an existing business, they're doing well now. I really don't see a justification for these major changes that are going to impact traffic and safety in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishes to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Daniel Day and I live at 294 Pleasant Street up in North Andover. And the comment I have to make, therefore, I'm not a abutment to this situation, I have no personal vested interest in it, so I am neither for nor against what they're planning to do. But the one omission that I see in this presentation, this well-prepared, well-timed presentation, thank you, was the situation of lighting to this new, to this new installation. If they are going to rebuild this as they plan to do, then I would presume that they're going to install new light standards, which would therefore incorporate the new LED technology and what have you, and rearrange the location of light standards around the, the property. And I was just wondering what impact, or if they had evaluated what the impact of that would be on the abutments and on the neighborhood as opposed to, since this will be, I'm presuming they're not going to be a 24/7 operation, but with the, with the coming winter weather and so forth, they will extend their operation hours into the evenings, into the night. And I'm not saying it's good or bad, I just didn't hear it addressed. Like I say, I have no vested interest myself in, in what happens. But I just did not hear that aspect of the installation presented, they were talking about the traffic patterns and so forth, but I, I don't know what they're intending to do with the lighting patterns out there and how the abutments would, would feel about that and how that might reflect on, on their properties and their lifestyle. So that was my only comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, yeah, please.
Just briefly addressing some of the comments. The last comment that was made about the lighting, it was our intent, if this were approved, to obtain site plan approval- approved, to obtain site plan approval, where certainly the lighting would be discussed with the city departments. Obviously, the LED lightings make for less light spillage now. They can be very focused directionally, and that would be an improvement, I think, to the existing lighting on the site. So, a lighting plan would be submitted with our site plan approval application, and again, the latest technology with LED, they're very focused, and they can be directed, and it would minimize light spillage on the adjacent property. By no order of importance here, it's, if we came before you with a flat, one-story structure, and a comment was made by the abutter that that wasn't very attractive. After having received that input, we redesigned the building to give it a residential feel with the pitched roof and clapboard siding. Now, we have an abutter that comes before us and says, "That's a monstrosity. We're willing to do whatever is best for the abutters and the neighbors, but when we please one abutter, it seems like we've alienated another abutter." I would submit to you that the plan with the pitched roof is a much more pleasing plan, and we thought we were making an improvement in regards to that. As far as the abutter who had an issue with noise with the air conditioning on the roof, look, we're willing to work with that abutter. You can condition your approval that we soundproof that air conditioning unit on top. That's not difficult to do. You can condition the approval, if you were to grant it, about screening that particular section that abuts the rear of the abutter's lot. We're willing to work with the abutter and satisfy those concerns, and it can be a condition of the variance. As far as the adjacent lot, boy, talk about walking into a bee's hive here. We came before you as you had a petition on the adjacent lot, which is zone commercial. This is a commercially zoned general business district. You know, each petition is judged on its own merits. I don't want to comment on the merits of that petition, and I could be incorrect, but my understanding is they're 10,000 square feet shot of the area required in that area. I may be incorrect in that, but you judge each petition on its own merits. But I think we're an existing business. I think we have a history there, and what we're trying to do, obviously, is improve, most importantly, the queuing of the pumps that are there. 'Cause right now, you have three pumps in a row, and anything other than that, you have the parallel park, as was said, I'm not gonna be repetitive, but this just eliminates the traffic within the site. Now, I understand that new location of the convenience store is going to add some concerns on traffic in and out. Just wanna bring to your attention at the outset, the reason why that store was not located there 20 years ago was because that was the site of the septic system. Because it makes no sense to tie in a store right here, adjacent to the pumps, when you walk out, it's just all congested right there. To have a store in this area with this existing pipes is more of a safety problem than if you were to locate it. And I would submit to the board that the reason why this building, 'cause when you're looking at it, look how narrow this building is, why would you put a convenience store right next to the pump? The reason why it wasn't put there was because that was the site of the septic system, which we stated now we can tie into the town sewer. So, we're willing to work with the abutters. We're not looking to cut corners. We thought we improved and made the building more aesthetically pleasing. We are definitely improving the traffic flow in and out. Is it perfect? No. But we feel that this is the best proposal that we have before you, understanding we started with the technical review committee before we even got to this board. And this is what, we've given it a lot of thought, and this is our best proposal. Again, we're willing to work with the abutters and address any of those concerns as part of a condition of the variance and special permit that would be granted if the board decided to do that. I'm not gonna comment on the holding of the Harrison case. I think I've differentiated that, and if the board has any questions about that, I can discuss that case further, but I will stand on the memo that I submitted and indicate that we, that case actually helps us and not hurts us.
So, are you going to the planning board?
Well, if you're going to the planning board for site plan approval.
That's my understanding of what's required.
And the reason why, is one of the reasons why the buildings in the front is to tie into the sewer would be cheaper? Or to take, if you keep the building in the back, 'cause you have to tie, are you already tied into sewer?
No, we'll be tied in. So, in 1999, prior to the owner purchasing this property from the prior owner, he came before the zoning board of appeals and received, and I've attached the copies of those decisions...
Apparently, I was in.
Yeah, that's right, I remember. I wasn't here, but I remember you stating that.
Yes.
They, the prior, the owner, the present owner, received relief before this board on multiple variances for setback, because of not compliance with the setback, and in order to tear down the existing site and rebuild and remodel that building. The reason why this was located, this convenience store was located in this location, if you're looking at this, it makes no sense to have a convenience store there when you have cars pulling up here, and you have pedestrians walking there. The only reason why, 'cause this was the only place that this can really logically be placed. This section right here was the site of the septic system, so no structure could be built there. Now, with the availability of town sewer, and we can dispose of our septic system and locate the structure there.
That's not what I asked.
Okay.
Is it cheaper if you have a building in the front, as opposed to a building in the back, to tie in the sewer?
I couldn't answer that, I'll defer.
That wasn't at all in our consideration. I mean, you're only talking about, I don't know, 50 feet or so of pipe, it's not a major, that's compared to the rest of the project, it's really nothing.
Just curious.
Listen, I just don't want this to be about the building construction, and we went through that with the other project, and it's not about making the building pretty. It is, it's a lost resort, it would be, but it's just where it is. I don't want that to be the case. Like, it's not about making it pretty. It's only 15% less of the building, you moved it over a little bit, the issues are all the same. This is all the same. This is disastrous. There's gonna be car crashes there, there's gonna, it's too busy. I just don't, I just wanted to make a point, that this is not about making the building pretty, because I feel like they're saying that because of the other case, because the other case, one, because they made the building pretty. This is a different issue. That building should not be moved there. It's just a problem, you know, with safety and everything else that I'm seeing. I just want to clarify that.
Just one final comment. Obviously, AL PRIME has multiple gas stations. The last thing they would want is to come forward with the proposal in any of their stations that would present a safety hazard to its customers. That's the best assurance a board would have, than any project before them. If you have a business owner with multiple stations, they have the experience, and they would not want a site improved so it would cause traffic problems. CVS, BJ's, you name it, they have it down. Dunkin' Donuts, they have it down. They're gonna minimize the traffic and safety concerns, as we did here.
Any other questions from the board?
There was reference made by the abutter, that the 100 feet, was the 100 feet the before with the existing property, or was the 100 feet with the proposed new property?
I, that was a number that Mr. Cooper threw out. I don't know the exact distance from my, the end of my house to his property. My property does extend all the way.
Anthony, where is your, can you get the plan?
Okay, so this is a plan that, I'll try to stand on this side so the audience can see also. This is a plan that shows the radius around the property, 300-foot radius was prepared. This is the property of the AL PRIME site, and the orange here is the proposed building. This area right here is the existing building. This is Mr. Carter's home. This is the next abutter further up, and I believe this is the home of the other person who said she lives across the street from...
Her house.
Oh, this one here, okay. From a distance standpoint, I mean, if you just take a look at the scale, it's over 100 feet from the corner of the building to the closest point. Not that that makes a big difference, but that gives you scale of the distance there. I mean, certainly, if our property was shaped the other way, we would be looking to put the building over there. I mean, that is the biggest, the deepest part of the property. It's the only place that makes any sense to put the building. I know we could probably make the building longer, make it a bowling alley, but it wouldn't improve the operation of the building, it wouldn't make the building work better, so there wouldn't be any sense in trying to spend money to not approve.
Mr. Cooper, could I just see the board you did with the three different variations that you had tried?
Got a lot of show and tell today.
Sorry.
I mean, when we took a look at this, we said, "Okay, where can we put that building?"
What's the size of that building? The top one?
This is the same building as we're proposing, the same 1,700 square.
So, what, and I could be speaking out of turn, because obviously, the abutter hasn't gotten a chance to comment on this, but kitty-cornering, making the building smaller, kitty-cornering it more in the corner, and making it so that the front of the building is facing 114, and having your two pumps where you're proposing your two pumps.
Turning it like this.
Well, I guess kitty-corner isn't right. Okay, tucking it in the corner, sorry. Ellen will kill me for kitty-corner. So, yeah, scoot it over.
Take it all the way into that corner.
Well, again...
But making it smaller, because I think one of the biggest things a lot of us are having a problem with is trying to swallow that huge building. And I totally understand the issue you're dealing with, with refrigeration. I get that from an employee standpoint, I get that from a business owner's standpoint. I guess I sit here and think when I'm looking at it, "Do you really need two bathrooms?" So, can you shrink it on that aspect of it? Do you really need such a big coffee station? Can you shrink it there? Can you shrink it on the sandwich case there? Can you shrink the storage in the office? I guess that becomes one of the questions of, I get what you guys are trying to do, but it's a lot to swallow.
Okay, so, right now, the building's a little over 700 square feet, and we're proposing to put it to 1,700. As far as the two bathrooms, by law, we're required to have two bathrooms once we go over 1,200 square feet. So, that's not something we can, so we'd have to make the building...
So, you'd stay under 1,200 square feet, and you could go...
We could go to one bathroom.
1,999 with one bathroom?
That's...
I'm just saying, I'm not saying that's...
No, you're correct in that we could do that legally under the plumbing code, which governs the number of bathrooms. And basically, that's why the building now only has one restroom, is because it's small enough to have had that allowed. If we, if we're gonna just move the building and have the same building we have now, from a standpoint of what's there, then there's no sense to just move and build a new building.
And I understand that, and I'm, again, I might be getting looks from some of the other board members, I'm not saying keep it identical to what it is, because I understand the concept, the difficulty you're faced with the refrigeration aspect. But I guess the question becomes, is can you keep the refrigeration aspect of it and shrink everything else? So that essentially, it ends up becoming less hands-on for the customer and more refrigeration space? Would that allow you to shrink it down?
Yeah, we're already increasing those functions, those non-retail areas functions of the store disproportionately to the amount of retail that we're increasing. But if we have to decrease the retail in order to accommodate that, it doesn't work either. I mean, the store right now, if you look at it, it's really tight, and there's really no, the condolors are tight, they're tall, they're overstacked with goods. We're trying to make it a better, more friendly atmosphere, and we're not gonna be able to do that if we just try to stuff it all into, you know, trying to put five pounds in a two-pound bag.
Like Alex says, I'm looking at this thing, and it's showing nine-door coolers, three-door freezers, mechanical storage. What if it was eight-door coolers, two-door freezers? Does that kitty-corner building now take on a different hue?
I mean, it, yes, it possibly would make it smaller. We're taking a look at it. Right now, we have six doors in what we have there now. So, we're increasing the number of doors from six to...
12.
12.
Not including the three freezer.
But we're going from six to nine on the medium temp. I'm not sure, we have, we don't have any freezer doors there now that are in that configuration. I think we might have a novelty case that has some ice cream in a small case near the door, whereas we would like to use the three doors to be able to have ice or other, you know, different kinds of knowledge. So, no, I don't, I, we, yes, everything's possible. Would it be worthwhile for us to do that? We really think we need what we're proposing.
I mean, you're saying you're taking, currently, you have a six-door cooler, right?
Six-door, we're going to nine.
Okay, which is a 50% increase.
Yes.
Okay. So, if that was eight, according to your plan here in front of the lottery thing, there's something on the floor? I mean, could that be your freezer cooler for your ice creams or whatever? I mean, I see three coolers on the floor here. I mean, I wanna make this work, but I wanna make people work too, you know what I'm trying to say? And like Alex said, it's just hard to swallow, okay? And Mr. Capone gave us this case here, and he says it helps his case. I don't see how it helps it, okay? Because I'm reading a paragraph, and I'm just gonna get to one. "The Special Permit Granting Authority," which I assume is us, designated by ordinance or by bylaw, "that such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to enable it." Okay? So, what you're saying, this is not more detrimental?
That's my, that's opposition, yes.
Well, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, Mr. Capone, right?
Right. I think a board can find that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use.
What if we ask these people, what do you think they would say?
They would disagree, but that's the standard that you apply, and obviously, I'm gonna argue that it's in our favor, but I...
I mean, I just took that one paragraph, that's something you gave me.
I think what that's talking about, and somebody would correct me if I'm wrong, is that's talking about the use, that's not talking about the size of the building or the location of the...
Pre-existing non-conforming structures, all uses may be extended or altered.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, the use is being expanded, right? He's going from six refrigerators to nine refrigerators. That's not expansion? That's 50%?
The use is convenience store and gas station, yes.
And I'm saying, it's a pre-existing use. I wanna make it work. It's pre-existing, it has a right to be there.
I would agree with you in that.
Yeah, okay, I have no problem with pre-existing. My problem is, like Alex, okay, it's, how can we do it? So, somebody's not looking at a wall, and you're not allowing us, and we're not swallowing five-foot setbacks.
Well, we listened to your input last meeting, and we thought we came back with a better proposal. We shrunk the building 300 square feet. We made the building, instead of a flat roof, we made it architecturally more pleasing. We, we've tried to work based on the input that we receive, and if we, we receive more input that we'll, we can work with it, we'll redesign it again. But, I, I really think whether it's 1,700 or 1,500 square feet, look, is, is it better overall to provide two handicap restrooms for the, for the customers who use that? I, I would think so. If, if we have to redesign this to 1,200 square feet, you have one handicap room that are used by men and women, I don't know if that's really improving and, the, the site at all. But look, it, when you look at this, it's going to be improved. This site would be improved. It would be updated, it would be aesthetically more pleasing, there'd be a lighting plan. And, and I think the most important thing out of all of this is the queuing of the vehicles that are there will be alleviated. And that's certainly one of the, the most important factors in us even coming before you. And I think that convenience store, we're losing sight, that, that, those pumps, those added pumps, by eliminating that existing convenience store, we're really improving the queuing for customers who come, and that improves safety. It improves safety. And when you can drive your vehicle up right to the convenience store, and you walk out of your vehicle, and you go into that door, there's less likely that you're gonna get hit by a, a moving vehicle. If, the way it is now, it, it creates more of a, a safety issue. But we're, we're willing to lis, listen, we're willing to listen and take the suggestions and recommendations of the board and the abutters. It's just, give us direction and guidance as to what you think we could do better.
Do we have any info on the actual queuing? I mean, aside from a butter's giving the, there's a really long queue? Or, do we have anything on that? I mean, what are we talking, a 10-minute queue, a 5-minute queue, 20-minute queue? From what it is now to, if you add two more pumps, from what I'm understanding, two more pumps isn't going to increase the number of people stopping for gas. It would increase, it would better flow. So my assumption would be, if you have 200 cars coming in, and right now, there's a 20-minute queue, changing it is going to get, you know, 210 cars, but now you're going to have no queue.
Okay, so my understanding on the operational location is that outside of the peak hours, when the customers are really busy there, there isn't really a queue problem. In my experience, we've really only worried about a queue problem that extends outside of the property, causes either a safety circulation on the property or extends off the property, and starts interfering with the, with the road network. And as far as I know, there's never, we don't ha, and maybe the, the neighbors can tell me that I'm wrong, but I don't think we've ever had a situation where the queuing on the property gets so bad that it goes out into the street.
Well, I think one of the abutters, and I could be wrong if I misunderstood, one of the abutters was talking about queuing outside of actual gas station.
Well, I, I was saying, my house, I was saying, the line outside of my house.
Just traffic backed up on Colonial.
Yeah, unfortunately, someone who's trying to make...
So it's the queuing on the, on the highway as opposed to the station?
Correct.
Waiting to turn?
From what I understand, there's, there's a, there's a problem that extends at this intersection. The neighborhood unfortunately has multiple problems. People cutting through the neighborhood as a shortcut. I'm not sure whether the traffic's going out away from 114 or towards 114 is something that was mentioned to me. People trying to make a left turn out of here. There's an issue where someone who's coming northbound might cut into that center median lane really early to try to make a left into the station. And because of that, it makes it dangerous to make a left out of the, out of that, uh, street. So, I mean, those are things that are existing now. I don't believe that we're talking about impacting those things either way. We're not gonna make it better, and I don't think we're gonna make it worse.
You can't get rid of jerk drivers.
We, we're increasing the traffic less than 1% as far as the total count on the street. And that's using a conservative number based on a linear relationship and taking the assumption that 30% of the customers we think that might come across the driveway, which we don't think it's gonna be that high, that 30% of those are people who are not driving on the road already. They're gonna, they're gonna go out of their way from someplace else and start coming here. And I really don't think, I think that's an inflated number. We're using it because it's conservative and because that's the best practice right now that the ITE has for traffic engineers. So you're bound to do that. But that doesn't mean that, that in real life, that that's what actually happens. And we think in this situation, those numbers are actually very conservative, and what we're gonna actually see is much better than what those numbers predict. But even if we use those numbers, we're talking less than 1% of an increase. So that's where that queuing is. I believe she's, she's worried.
So then you're not having any queuing within the actual...
Someone said they have seen cars back up out of the...
And I guess that kind of becomes, you know, one of my questions is...
Yeah, okay, so...
I mean, if we're talking like once in, you know, 10 years, then obviously...
Well, I don't know. It's happened that it's already at that time, it couldn't happen yet.
But I, but I understand that even some of the members of the board are frequent customers at the location, and I don't know if anyone else has seen it.
I've seen, I've seen a queue. I've driven by because it's queued. I'm not gonna lie about that.
But that's not out in the street?
It's, it's not out in the street, but I mean, at the end of the day, the problem that comes is, it will get queued to the driveway. So, you know, I'm sitting there going, okay, am I sitting in 114 for the next five, 10 minutes until the queue moves? Or am I just gonna, you know, head to Boston with my miserable day?
Okay.
Stop at Cumberland.
We're try, we're trying to improve the situation for our customers. We're trying to reduce the queue on-site. I don't believe we have a queue situation that is a safety situation that extends out to the street. I've been, been involved with locations and proposals where there's drive-through windows or other factors like that, where you have cars backing up, and they do back into the street, and people are just determined to get that cup of coffee in the morning, and they will back four or five cars deep in the street, and it does cause a problem on the street. We don't have that problem now, and we're not gonna, and actually, we're never gonna have that problem if we're able to put these in, because we're, we're gonna improve the queue that's on-site and contained on-site. Right now, as far as the customers in the store, we don't expect to have a lot more customers. To be honest, what we're hoping is that the customers that come to the site, instead of selling somebody five bucks' worth of stuff while they're in there getting their gas, maybe they'll buy seven bucks' worth of stuff. It's a more attractive store, maybe they'll spend a little bit more time and buy a little bit more.
Okay, so then that brings me to an interesting question. If you're not looking for an increase in store business, and I think you're addressing some of the abutters in the concern of this becoming a hangout for Barry Street or for other people in the neighborhood? If that's not what you're looking for, then why do you need to make it bigger and hold more?
We are a volume, low, low-margin marketer, and you know that, because we have the good, the best prices in town. We can only maintain that if we can supplement the income that we're getting from those gas sales with other sales. We make more money on a bag of chips and can of Coke than we do on a fill-up. So based on that, the store sales are important. Now, we're getting a lot of competition from BJ's, the Cumberland Farms that are going up. I mean, Mr. Gillen mentioned that, the big Cumberland Farms that was just built in the downtown middle of Middleton. So, from our standpoint, it's a matter of surviving and, and continuing to operate and continue. It's not necessarily trying to make this into some Taj Mahal and, and create something really big. We're just trying to maintain, keep the, the place up, you know, looking nice, keep the place, uh, uh, someplace that customers want to keep coming to. So, we, we have a limited budget. We try to spend it on all our stations the best we can. When the opportunity at this location came up that the septic system could be eliminated, we looked at it and said, can we make the property a little bit better for, for our customers and for us? And, and this is what the proposal is, that, that we're coming to you for, so...
Is there room to budge on the size?
Well, if you're telling me...
I mean, like I say, I think that's the biggest thing that everyone has to swallow.
If, if you, if you're telling me that we have to make it small enough to be able to have one bathroom, I can say, definitely no.
Yeah, that's, I guess, that's a question I would, I don't know about interrupting if I'm done, but what I heard the abutters say was that it was the location, and it's the lights, and it's the possible noise in the refrigeration unit. And so whether it's 1,199 feet or 1,700 feet or whatever, those issues will still be the same. So I guess that's a question I, I'd pose to the abutters, if I may. Is it a matter of the size or is it a matter of the location?
I think it's both, I suppose. I think it's both, I mean, just...
So if it was smaller, if it was smaller, but in the same, in a new location, it would still be a problem, too?
So I, I need to interrupt, Ron. Pardon me, I didn't expect a free-for-all.
I'm sorry.
We, we, we need everybody up at the microphone, 'cause we, we need your voices on the, on the record, that's all.
My fault, I apologize.
I'm sorry.
I think it's both. I agree with everything you guys are saying. It's, it's the location and the size, you know, if... I don't know. It's, it's just, that location is just unattractive, and it's, it's just a weird kind of location of it. So, even if it was this, if it's, if it's smaller to fit one bathroom, it can just be where it is. That's the problem. And why can't it just be there? And it's just making a profit? And it's, you know, what I'm hearing is, it's not about profit, it's about maintaining. But it's not, how could it be about maintaining? If it's, it's bigger than life, I don't understand. And I'm hearing, talking about traffic numbers, but I thought we don't have any numbers. Do we have, like, actually, studies, like, that have been concluded? I, I thought I, I thought I heard, like, based on the numbers, it's only 1% increase, but I thought we didn't have any numbers? And I don't know what you guys have. But I just really can hard, it, it's really hard for me to believe that it's gonna be 1% of increase. 100% that people are gonna go there for drinks, for soda, you know, for chips, without just getting gas, 100%. People are gonna be walking over from apartments, every, like, it's just, it's just what it's gonna turn into. Sorry, I didn't mean to speak.
Can I say, say one thing? In a perfect world...
Yeah.
This place doesn't exist.
Yeah.
But it does exist.
And it's fine, and, and like...
Okay, so, so, it's not gonna go away?
I'm not trying to make it go away. I just want it to be either where it is.
It's a pre-existing use that we have to try and accommodate everybody.
Yeah. So if it can just stay over there, not move?
But if it stayed, if it stayed there...
Yeah.
Why would that not cause people to walk across the street to get a service?
Well, it's the size too, but that's why I mentioned it's both. I mean, it, it's huge, that why do, for two bathrooms, like, who, like, there's definitely gonna be hanging out, like, who? There's people gonna be going there from all over the place, not just from getting gas. It's, I, I mean, I can see it. It, I, it doesn't matter that they say it's not gonna happen, it will happen.
I'm, I'm trying to understand what you're, Anthony, what your concern is, particularly with crowds, is that, is it a concern that an open public communal space?
Yes, absolutely.
And, I mean, that most, I would assume the communal space would be a positive. It would be a place that, you know, everybody could gather in, and it would be a useful institution.
Oh, it's, it's a great problem to have unless you live right there and you have small children, um, I mean...
I mean, I have a two-year-old now, almost two-year-old, a four-year-old.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, for me, it's not a positive. That, I mean, that's not a positive for me.
Are there folks hanging out there now? Are there, are there crowds that hang out there now?
No.
No?
No, maybe a few kids, neighborhood kids, they'll ride their bikes, they'll grab soda, and they'll, there's nobody like...
So is there an expectation that a larger store is going to be a trigger to draw?
I think, I think so.
Hangers-outers?
I think so. There's more spaces, there's more food, there's more drinks, there's bathrooms. It's just welcoming that. It's just my opinion. I'm just nervous.
All right, well, with that, I think we need to take a pause. We've been at it for a little more than an hour and a half. So why don't we take a five-minute recess for folks to get a drink, have a chat? Hit the loop.
Thank you.
Oh, that's one of them. So is that all you have to do, is to write you a note?
Yes.
And I get a bathroom?
Yes.
And I get a bathroom?
The question is, can we build a sound barrier around it?
We certainly could, but I think the fact that we're trying to, right now, that shelf would be about six feet below the peak of the roof, and the units are only about 30 inches tall, so we would have four foot of space. We could build into the side of that some sound deadening material. It's still open on the top. It has to be for air circulation around the unit. So we could possibly build in some additional sound insulation into the framework of the building. But as far as putting in, we often are asked to put in sound barriers on our flat roof structures, and something like that wouldn't work here because I don't think we want to, I don't think you want to see anything up above the roof line. And that's, that's the only other thing we could do because the roof itself does the same thing or better than that kind of sound insulation panel would do, so.
Thank you.
All right. So I think that I'm going to hesitate to close public comment. I would love to have the board deliberate for a bit, perhaps get a little bit of direction to see if there are more comments, questions, or ideas that bounce in among yourselves that don't necessarily head out to the applicant themselves. The first thing that comes to my mind, fellow board members, is, you know, I hear everybody loud and clear, this absolutely feels like, you know, stuffing 10 pounds of flour in a 5-pound bag. And that, there's a lot of that that is of necessity because it appears as though, you know, the northern third of this property is essentially useless for any kind of commercial purposes. So therefore, the entirety of the commerce is in the bottom, you know, in the southern two-thirds of it. And there's not an extraordinary amount of room, as we experienced with the Bragato application. All sorts of setbacks required here. I can, I generally, just for the application of the board, I find myself reconciling, you know, an awful lot of the issues with some of the applicant's help here. Certainly, deadening the sound and quieting the lights and the traffic circulation, I agree, Ms. McIntyre, that this is, this is far from something that you would draw up if you had a wonderful, wonderfully sized, wonderfully shaped, actually more aptly, a wonderfully shaped piece of land. I'm not sure that that's something that I trip over too much, however, because I think that customers adapt one way or the other. They figure it out the same way that Alexandria drives by when she sees a queue, as do I. You know, if you see this mess, you just, I just don't pull in. The size of the building is absolutely an issue for me, but it's not necessarily just about the size of the building for me. What it really is about for me is the five-foot setback, which Alan indicated earlier, and I think I indicated last time, is that that is, that's where the five-pound bag is coming in. There's just not a lot of room to put a building of any sense, frankly, on the southern end of this lot. I don't know how to get around that. The professionals of the applicant may have already wrestled with it, may continue to wrestle with it, I don't know. But I would find myself challenged to come to a, an embracing of the five-foot setback in the context of all of the other things that the applicant has said and is, was willing to do, not the least of which, contrary to some of the commentary from the gallery, is that the aesthetics absolutely matter. I mean, we were trying to hang Ms. Connie's application on aesthetics for Pete's sake, so aesthetics absolutely matter. The applicant has come a long way. In no way am I suggesting that that's a heroic effort by the applicant because we shouldn't have been seeing concrete blocks in the first place. So this is where the clambered building with the pitch roof is where we should have been starting from. So I'm not necessarily offering kudos to the applicant, but I am saying that the application has certainly improved and come to a place that I think is far more sensible on the aesthetics piece only, which is not the only piece that I would be a guy weighing. So with that, my main concern is not the noise because I think, I think, I honestly think that the noise can be managed. I'm a guy who has been in and around commercial real estate. Is the noise ever going to be deadened entirely? No, I've heard the applicant say that himself. Is like going to, you know, spill generally? Yeah, but they can certainly keep the radius within, awfully close to within the lot lines. Are there going to be people hanging out? I don't know the answer to that question. I mean, there are certainly parts of me that suggest that. When you're in a general business district, you hope that the community comes to your store and buys your goods and finds your place welcoming. And that's a not-so-subtle segue into that this is a general business district, for better or worse. This is a commercial piece of land. It is, unfortunately, for many of the folks in the gallery, adjacent to residential pieces of land. It's not a new commercial property. We're not building something from scratch here. This is pre-existing, as Alan has said repeatedly, and that certainly counts for something. There's a pre-existing piece of commerce in a commercial piece of land. It is hard for me to think ill of an applicant or an application for trying to enhance a commercial building on a commercial piece of land. So I don't pretend that I have arisen any answers for my fellow board members. I'm just hopefully sparking some additional conversation to the extent that there's value for everybody.
And I would say that I agree with most of what's said. I don't think there's anything wrong with somebody in a commercial piece of land improving their business. I don't think there's anything wrong with a business trying to become a better, bigger, more profitable business, provided that, you know, the impact is not, you know, totally detrimental. The one place where I guess I'm not in agreement is the five-foot setback doesn't bother me for that property. It does not bother me. The property is such an odd shape that I think the situating of that store at the end of the lot makes sense. And while a five-foot setback in a residential area may not be attractive, in a commercial area where there are only two buildable lots there, it doesn't concern me at all.
Mr. Gob, am I saying it right? You move your mind if I can read yours. With some of the suggestions that you stated a few minutes ago, the way I feel, I think we can definitely have a Tip O'Neill moment. Do you understand my meaning?
I don't.
I don't.
It's called compromise. It's called compromise. When I came to this board, I brought Tip O'Neill's book, and I said, this board is all about compromise. Okay? And the way I feel, if you did a couple of these suggestions, because you have to keep in mind, it's a pre-existing, it's there. It's there. Okay? And trying to work with everybody, I think we can compromise with a couple of the things, you know, like taking a cooler out or something. Just shrink it a little bit, and I think we can make it work. And I give up on the five-foot. I understand. It's the shape of the lot. I mean, what can you do? Okay? I get it. It's not right, but it's there. I've said my piece.
So my question is, the existing three pumps that are there are not to be touched. So you couldn't maneuver those to make those? Correll, or however you're calling it, are parallel? I don't know what you, what you...
Stiding gate is the...
I don't know.
Are you saying something like, take this, put it there, and then this building?
We're not proposing to change any of these. Are you suggesting that maybe we move, instead of having five, we move things around so we still have this configuration but with only three?
I think she's suggesting turning them so that you have the starting gate-type environment instead of having them all in a line together.
If I could have done it, I would have. I looked at that. I mean, that's, that's the preferred way to lay it out, so we, I do try to look at that initially. You run into a lot of other problems. I mean, we're...
We would certainly be happy with a condition that the outside condenser units would be the more expensive, lower dB units that have built-in sound insulation. I mean, obviously, they still will have some noise, but we would be willing to a condition that says we have to use the highest available, lowest sound generating units available, and we would certainly accept that as a condition. Thank you. The question is, can we build a sound barrier around it? We certainly could, but I think the fact that we're trying to, right now, that shelf would be about six feet below the peak of the roof, and the units are only about 30 inches tall, so we would have four foot of space. We could build into the side of that some sound deadening material. It's still open on the top, it has to be, for air circulation around the unit, so we could possibly build in some additional sound insulation into the framework of the building. But as far as putting in, we often are asked to put in sound barriers on our flat roof structures, and something like that wouldn't work here because I don't think we want to, I don't think you want to see anything up above the roof line. And that's the only other thing we could do, because the roof itself does the same thing or better than that kind of sound insulation panel would do, so.
Thank you. So I think that I'm going to hesitate to close public comment. I would love to have the board deliberate for a bit, perhaps get a little bit of direction to see if there are more comments, questions, or ideas that have bounced in among yourselves that don't necessarily head out to the applicant themselves. The first thing that comes to my mind, fellow board members, is, you know, I hear everybody loud and clear, this absolutely feels like, you know, stuffing 10 pounds of flour in a five-pound bag, and that, there's a lot of that that is of necessity, because it appears as though, you know, the northern third of this property is essentially useless for any kind of commercial purposes. So therefore, the entirety of the commerce is in the bottom, you know, in the southern two-thirds of it, and there's not an extraordinary amount of room, as we experienced with the Bragato application. All sorts of setbacks required here. I can, I generally, just for the application of the board, I find myself reconciling, you know, an awful lot of the issues with some of the applicant's help here. Certainly, deadening the sound and quieting the lights and the traffic circulation, I agree, Ms. McIntyre, that this is far from something that you would draw up if you had a wonderful, wonderfully sized, wonderfully shaped, actually, more aptly, a wonderfully shaped piece of land. I'm not sure that that's something that I trip over too much, however, because I think that customers adapt one way or the other. They figure it out the same way that Alexandria drives by when she sees a queue, as do I. You know, if you see this mess, you just, I just don't pull in. The size of the building is absolutely an issue for me, but it's not necessarily just about the size of the building for me. What it really is about for me is the five-foot setback, which Alan indicated earlier, and I think I indicated last time, is that that is, that's where the five-pound bag is coming in. There's just not a lot of room to put a building of any sense, frankly, on the southern end of this lot. I don't know how to get around that. The professionals of the applicant may have already wrestled with it, may continue to wrestle with it, I don't know, but I would find myself challenged to come to a, an embracing of the five-foot setback. In the context of all of the other things that the applicant has said and was willing to do, not the least of which, contrary to some of the commentary from the gallery, is that the aesthetics absolutely matter. I mean, we were trying to hang Ms. Connie's application on aesthetics for Pete's sake, so aesthetics absolutely matter. The applicant has come a long way, and no way am I suggesting that that's a heroic effort by the applicant, because we shouldn't have been seeing concrete blocks in the first place. So this is where the clambered building with the pitch roof is where we should have been starting from. So I'm not necessarily offering kudos to the applicant, but I am saying that the application has certainly improved and come to a place that I think is far more sensible on the aesthetics piece only, which is not the only piece that I would be a guy weighing. So with that, my main concern is not the noise, because I think, I honestly think that the noise can be managed. I'm a guy who has been in and around commercial real estate, is the noise ever going to be deadened entirely? No, I've heard the applicant say that himself. Is like going to, you know, spill generally, yeah, but they can certainly keep the radius within, awfully close to within the lot lines. Are there going to be people hanging out? I don't know the answer to that question. I mean, there are certainly parts of me that suggest that, when you're in a general business district, you hope that the community comes to your store and buys your goods and finds your place welcoming. And that's a not-so-subtle segue into that this is a general business district, for better or worse, this is a commercial piece of land. It is unfortunately, for many of the folks in the gallery, adjacent to residential pieces of land. It's not a new commercial property, that we're not building something from scratch here. This is pre-existing, as Alan has said repeatedly, and that certainly counts for something. There's a pre-existing piece of commerce in a commercial piece of land. It is hard for me to think ill of an applicant or an application for trying to enhance a commercial building on a commercial piece of land. So I don't pretend that I have arisen any answers for my fellow board members, I'm just hopefully sparking some additional conversation to the extent that there's value for everybody.
And I would say that I agree with most of what's said. I don't think there's anything wrong with somebody in a commercial piece of land improving their business. I don't think there's anything wrong with a business trying to become a better, bigger, more profitable business, provided that, you know, the impact is not, you know, totally detrimental. The one place where I guess I'm not in agreement is, the five-foot setback doesn't bother me. For that property, it does not bother me. The property is such an odd shape that I think the situating of that store at the end of the lot makes sense. And while a five-foot setback in a residential area may not be attractive, in a commercial area where there are only two buildable lots there, doesn't concern me at all.
Mr. Gob, am I saying it right? Remind him I can make a use. With some of the suggestions that you stated a few minutes ago, the way I feel, I think we can definitely have a Tip O'Neill moment. Do you understand my meaning?
I don't.
I don't.
It's called compromise. It's called compromise. When I came to this board, I brought Tip O'Neill's book, and I said, this board is all about compromise. Okay? And the way I feel, if you did a couple of these suggestions, because you have to keep in mind, it's a pre-existing, it's there. It's there, okay? And trying to work with everybody, I think we can compromise with a couple of the things, you know, like taking a cooler out or something, just shrink it a little bit, and I think we can make it work. And I give up on five foot, I understand. It's the shape of the lot, I mean, what can you do? Okay? I get it. It's not right, but it's there. I've said my piece.
So my question is, the existing three pumps that are there are not to be touched. So you couldn't maneuver those to make those? Corral, or however you're calling it, or parallel, I don't know what you, what you...
Dive-in gate, is that what you mean?
I don't know.
Are you saying something like, take this, put it there, and then this building in?
Yes.
We're not proposing to change any of these. Are you suggesting that maybe we move, instead of having five, we move things around so we still have this configuration, but with only three?
I think she's suggesting turning them so that you have the starting gate-type environment, instead of having them all in a line together.
If I could have done it, I would have. I looked at that, I mean, that's the preferred way to lay it out, so we, I do try to look at that initially. You run into a lot of other problems, I mean, we obviously want to have enough room in between, especially on a site like this, that's so narrow that a car can pass in between them. So when I, when I'm starting to look at putting a location in, and it's perpendicular to the street where you have your dispensers like this, the site is definitely not deep enough to be able to do anything but to, if I turn it and try to have the dispensers sitting like this, so someone would come in, actually go across the front of the line, and then pull in like this, or at an angle, I tried looking at that and trying to make that work. The most space-efficient way to do that is if they're perpendicular to the street, because now when a car pulls in, you only have the space between that car and the next car across the dispensing islands. If I try to angle them and go with dive-in islands, similar to the Fast Freddies in Milton, what happens is you have to expand that, because now that 12-foot lane alongside of the dispenser gets turned, and the next one gets turned also, so that the distance forces the islands further apart. So when I do that, in order to get, even these three end up going from here to somewhere in here, and I'd still only end up with three dispensers. So I tried really hard to do it, and I couldn't do it. It's a good idea, and we certainly would have if we could have. Normally, on the, on either side of those dispensers, I need somewhere around 30 feet for a car to be able to make the turn in, and then afterwards be able to make the turn out. If you add that up, that's 60, plus the length of the car in between is 80, the property at this point isn't even 80 feet deep, so right off the bat, I can't do that.
Look, I know that you've thought of every configuration, and I don't pretend that I have any sense of creativity, I just want to hear, hey, Paul, that's, tell me the reason why it's dumb or impractical or...
Sort of impractical.
So in the three, the three pumps, yeah, so the first pump all the way to the left, closest to the, to the, to the building, tell me the downside or the impracticality of taking that pump and putting it at the other end of the trio, yeah? Thereby buying 10-ish feet for the, for the building to move over, or to give some breathing space to the egress, ingress and egress lanes?
I mean, that's something that we could do, the dispensers are there, so we weren't looking to necessarily move it. We didn't think it caused a big problem. If that's something that you felt would make it better, I could take a look, a closer look at that. One of the concerns about putting a dispenser here is really the traffic that comes on the inside of this island, trying to get back in between. One dispenser might not be a big problem with that, I have to take a look at it with a template and a tractor-trailer type arrangement. It's possible that could, that might work, it would definitely make this driveway a little bit easier for that last customer coming out here. But this still works, I mean, it looks tight on the piece of paper, but it does work, so it might be an improvement, I, we could possibly look at that. Are you saying move this one here and still have, so that they would be staggered, these would still be here, or you're saying just move this one?
Oh geez, I hadn't gotten that far. Because the new pumps, it's my assumption that you didn't put them there just because they're leveled, the duo over the trio, you didn't just try to line them up, I imagine that the duo is there because that's the only place there's room, since the back lot line is angled. So moving the number-one pump on the duo, you know, similarly, is not practical, I imagine.
Our original goal was to put three additional dispensers in, but because of the lot configuration, it wouldn't work, and I said, we just, we just can't fit, we just can't fit them down. I mean, it would actually, we actually had it there, and it was tight, and said, you know, we're only 10 feet off the property line with a dispenser, and that's just enough for a car to go in, and I said, I just, I just don't think that's good, so we eliminated that.
Additional thoughts?
I mean, my feeling is, in terms of that turnoff coming off of it, I think it is tight, but I also don't think it's worse than what is there right now, and I think that's sort of the standard we work with, is that, does this make it substantially worse than what we already have? And I don't think it does. I say it with some tentativeness, but I don't think it does. And I'm not that worried about the five-foot setback, because it's bordering commercial property. I am a little worried about the proximity of the generator and the waste bin to the butters property. That one bothers me a little bit more than the five-foot setback, oddly enough.
Could you flip it, put that in the front, in a fenced area, and push the building back a little more?
We could possibly do that. I mean, normally, people don't want us to put the trash enclosure on the street, on the, put the trash enclosure on the front of the building, I mean, give it a look.
Could you put it behind the building if you moved?
No.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, no, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. What I'm saying is that if you were to entertain moving the left pump to the other side, are you then able to, oh, you can't move, okay, never mind. That's why I stick to my day job.
Yeah, the trash enclosure includes accessibility to it by the normal truck, so I can't just put it in a spot where a truck can't get to it, so I have to consider that also.
Can you put it freestanding, like more away, like where the old building, a little bit to the, looking at the old building?
Well, right now, this would all be traffic lanes through here, so put, trying to put it here would not work.
Not so much there, more towards the middle, like in...
Put it out here?
Yeah.
I could possibly do that, I mean, I could eliminate a parking space and shift, right now, part of this is the handicap accessible lane for fan-accessible. If I can shift all that down, I could possibly move that out here.
Yeah. Because I feel like that actually might help, is just moving it towards the State Forest line.
If that may, I mean, if that's, if that's the deal breaker, we certainly can change it for that.
Who knows what the deal breaker is at this point? Your guess is as good as all of ours.
I mean, I don't get a vote on this one, so, perhaps not the voice you should be listening to, but...
Well, I appreciate all the comments.
Look, in my, my younger self wouldn't appreciate this comment, because I absolutely worked in a gas station convenience store for a couple of years in college. So again, my younger self isn't proud of this comment, but I'm going to ask anyway, which is, moving the trash, I think, I think this was mentioned at the last meeting, and it feels really impractical, but I'd love for perhaps a little longer look, which is, what are the, how substantial are the challenges associated with moving the trash all the way to the northern end of the, the useless northern end of the lot?
That is so unfair. That is so unfair.
In the winter, that's miserable.
I mean, we prefer not to move it there from actual use of, like you mentioned, the attendant having to walk all the way across to get to it. It's a security issue, most of the time, you have people doing the cleanup after the stores close, and that's the time when they're taking the big bags of trash from the store over to the dumpster, it's not usually in the middle of the day, so it's at night in the dark. So for those reasons, we'd like to keep it closest to the store. Again, if that, if that swings and says, you have to do that, that's not something that I would say, we can't, we can't entertain that at all. I mean, I can say that on a 1,200-square-foot store, but I, on the, moving the trash over to here, I think that, I can't say for certain, I would have to talk to the owner, my boss, but that might be something, if we know that we can do the other stuff for it, he might say, the attendants are going to kill us.
That is so unfair. I'm sorry, I think that's so...
I don't think that's practical.
I think that's so unfair.
The trash enclosure, the trash is here now, and not in an enclosure, so we are improving that, the situation that it is now. If you're looking at it from a standpoint, is it more detrimental than existing, we're certainly making that better. It's not the best situation, I agree. And we certainly would like to keep landscaping back here, and we can put whatever kind of fencing you want to see around that enclosure. The enclosures are usually only, you know, three to four feet high, and we can put in a six-foot white vinyl fence and hide it, so that you really can't see it from anywhere outside of it.
Me, my big issue is the parking spot number one to the pump, because you have 32 feet from the end of the parking spot to the pump. I'm looking at these pictures, I'm looking at cars pulled way up, so that eliminates 32. So I do, in the curb cut, eliminating the curb cut from 50 to 30, that's one of my biggest concerns, because it is a safety issue for me, and I know you said it's not, you know, the numbers were on paper, but I see it differently on paper as well.
Are you suggesting we just get rid of that, that spot altogether?
Someone's going to park in it anyways, even though it's not going to, you know, any...
Yeah, but I can bring that up in here like this, and just increase that road, if the concern is for that particular car, but I don't know that it's that much more or worse than the next one, I mean...
But would moving the, and I'm again going back to Paul's idea on this, is moving that one, would moving that one pump alleviate that, right?
He stole that idea from me, because I wrote it down on paper.
Okay, well, I'll give you both kudos for it. I kind of think that might be a way to go. I mean, that would solve, Ellen and her parking is a, look back at past meetings, it's a big thing on her.
I mean, it's added an expense for us.
In size.
I think there's some value to take that dispenser out of that area. The canopy itself, obviously, we have to, we have to redo the canopy, we weren't going to touch this canopy, so we'd have to redo it. There's a column here that might have to go away also, so there's some significant cost in doing that, but I'm not sure that it would necessarily prevent us from doing that.
I suppose at this point, it's a direction and an option.
Okay.
I mean, it's better to find out and get a no than don't do and get a no. I mean, not saying that the board's going one way or another, I'm just saying. I'm just saying.
Walk it back, Ms. Jacobs.
I'm walking it back. I'm walking it back. It's late.
I think I've passed it on my engineering.
So I think we're on, I think we're on a path to continuing to October...
Second.
October, October 2nd. As long as there is nothing else, do we need time waivers, assuming that's agreeable?
Yeah.
All right. Unless there's anything else, members of the board, is there a motion to continue?
I make a motion to continue to October 2nd, Valerie?
I'll second it.
October 2nd, there was a second?
I'll second.
We remember we voted on it last time.
We did?
Yeah. We changed the date.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, they don't remember, so.
So the motion made and seconded. And that's at 7:30, right? Yes, sir.
7:30, and I need a sec, I'm not here.
Senior Center?
No, Administration.
Oh, Administration.
The School Administration, Attorney Capani.
What's that?
The next meeting, October 2nd, will be at the School Administration Building.
Okay.
Which is where the old police department...
Okay.
...is located.
Thank you, and I just want to thank the board for your thoughtful consideration. I know this is the second meeting, you've dedicated a lot of time and thoughtfulness on this, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
So a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So unanimously continued to October 2nd.
Did we really vote on removing the...
Yeah. So the next, if everybody could take conversation into the hallway, that would be appreciated. Gentlemen, if we could take the conversation to the hallway, we'll carry on with the remainder of the public meeting. The next item on the agenda is the petition of James LaFond at 329 Osgood Street. Good evening.
Good evening. A long evening.
It has, if you could just reintroduce yourselves for tonight's record.
Okay, so I'm Lisa LaFond.
And I'm Jim LaFond, James LaFond.
And we live at 329 Osgood.
Brilliant, thank you. All right, so it's been a month, submitted a few things, why don't you tell us about it?
Okay, so I just briefly have a few comments to make, and then Jim will further discuss what we've done. Okay, so at the last meeting, on August 14th, your board had several concerns about our proposed garage. We have tried to address those issues and have altered our plan as follows. We have submitted to you an amended plan, which sets the garage back 15 feet from Phillips Court. This meets the zoning requirements, and we no longer need that variance. The amended plan shows the garage to be located perpendicular to Phillips Court. It is no longer at an angle. With careful landscaping on our part, we can make this a very attractive garage in our neighborhood. The amended plan shows the setback from the rear lot line at 10 feet. Here is where we need a variance from your board. 10 feet matches the same setback as the shed that is on the property next to us. The required setback of 30 feet would limit the use of our backyard tremendously and make this project unlikely to happen. When we started planning for this garage way back in February, we contacted the same architect we used back in 1997 for an addition to our home. She is an architect with 40 years of experience specializing in restoring, repairing, renovating, and expanding homes, working in Andover for most of those years, until moving to Bennington, Vermont. Our home is not a historic home, but it is a traditional Cape, and adding on needed a certain expertise. She came back to our home in March, heard our thoughts for a garage, then we walked the property to see where the optimal placement of the garage should be. It was very carefully thought out and discussed. Your board suggested we hire a lawyer for this project. We have been unsuccessful in retaining a lawyer, but we do have a most experienced architect who did serve on the zoning board in Andover, and now serves on the zoning board in Bennington, Vermont. Her expertise has been most helpful in this arduous task of seeking a variance for this project. We are homeowners of a small house in the heart of North Andover, asking for your permission to build a garage.
So, as Lisa said, the two big changes that we made to address some of the concerns of the board were to change the orientation to perpendicular, and we weren't really sure what the concern, whether it was to be parallel to the lot line or parallel to our house, so it is parallel to the house, because obviously, the home is visible, a lot line is not. But, you know, again, that's something that we could, could change. The second thing was, by setting it five feet further back from Phillips Court, there is no variance, I guess, for that setback requirement, just the rear lot line. A few other comments that were made by the board at that meeting were, number one, the clarification on the 1,300 square foot, you can see the surveyor has inserted ground floor within the perimeter of the house to clarify that, and has also added a footnote, the double asterisk over in the right bottom line, living space 2278 by Town Records. The surveyor was reluctant to put the total square footage in the plan, he said that's not typical standards for surveyors, they're supposed to work in two dimensions, which is what's inside the perimeter drawn on the plan. So I didn't want to get into a contest of that, so we put it both ways. We also drew the driveway, or the proposed driveway, on as was requested. So I think that were, those are the main comments that first came up on the board. There was also one of our butters here who spoke, I don't know if she spoke against it, but she had concerns about the project, Mrs. Donovan, and unfortunately, she's not here tonight, so we don't know whether the new plan has really appeased her concerns, but I think she was bringing up some things that we weren't entirely sure what she was talking about. One was traffic, you know, we, we don't think that even if, on a weekend day, we were to make five trips in and out, that, you know, since we're the first house on the street, that it would really be increasing traffic on Phillips Court. She also mentioned visibility, the close... The closest edge of the garage would be more than seventy-eight feet from Osgood Street, the intersection. You know, there is no intersection there. I don't know what visibility it would be blocking. So, anyway, I can't really address whether her, you know, we've met her concerns or appeased them, but hopefully they would. The last thing that I wanted to clarify was, you know, we had discussions at the last meeting about the hardship being only for matters of topography, soil, and shape. And we have no contest with topography or soil. You know, we talked to the architect and our surveyor. Shape, though, I guess it determines, I don't know whether there is a ZBA definition, you know, in statute of what shape is, but just using its dictionary definition, our lot is a little bit weird shaped. I mean, taking aside from the part that is very small, if you look at it from Osgood Street, it's the left side, the left lot line is, it's got this tulip shape to it. It's a large bulb out at the intersection of Osgood and Phillips. And then it swings in like the bulb of a tulip to the back lot line. So making the back lot line about fifteen or seventeen feet narrower than the front lot line. So the one place where we would logically put a garage in the back or on the sides, which would require similar variance, you know, it's narrowed up particularly there. So, you know, again, we do think shape is a concern. I don't know if that meets the qualifications for it, but again, it's a small oddly shaped on one side lot. The other sides are somewhat perpendicular or, you know, parallel to each other, perpendicular to each other. But, again, that's the constraint we have. The other thing about the shape is where the existing non-conforming house was put. I don't really know when my grandparents built this house, what the zoning laws were. You know, I can't answer that. I mean, if they had put it ten feet from the street, would that have been allowed at that time? I don't know. But that would have given us a lot more room in the back. Had they put it five feet from my parents' lot line, you know, that would have given us much more room on the other side to do it, you know. But we don't have that. You know, what we've got is what we've got, this shape, this size, and so that's it. I know it's been a long night for you, so I'm going to wrap it up there. And if you have questions, or if anybody has questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. Anything from the board?
I don't recall us telling you to hire a lawyer. I mean, it was...
Well, it was suggested.
It wasn't sugge, it was not suggested. I don't recall, I would never tell anyone to have an expense I didn't have. I think we recommended reading the law, the thought of the requirements. And if you interpreted it as hiring a lawyer, I apologize. That was not my intention to say that you need to seek counsel regarding this matter.
I don't remember who said it, and I guess we'd have to go back and listen to tape, but I think so.
I might have made the comment that continuing would allow them, if they wanted to, to consult with a lawyer.
It was suggested. We didn't tell you that you needed to hire a lawyer.
We did talk to, we tried to talk to a lawyer. We didn't get calls back twice, you know. And it's only a month. I know it's, but we're dealing with the architect, we're dealing with surveyors. So, you know, again, we just didn't have time to make that, and we never received the calls back from the person who was recommended, so. And it's our fault, I'm not, we're not saying that, just we didn't, we didn't get in touch with one, we couldn't retain one.
Like I said, it wasn't, you have to get a lawyer.
I understand.
Just wanted to clear that up.
Any comments regarding the actual application from the board?
I think it's a wonderful job.
Excuse me?
I said, I think it's a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is from the crazy one, too.
I know.
I think my question would be, Mr. Koch, if you feel that this addressed your concern about hardship?
I think, yes. The applicant has taken it head-on and addressed it appropriately and completely, so, yes.
So you agree with me?
Wait, wait, what did I just step in? Alan, save me.
So I think my concerns as well was the ten feet from the garage, which you addressed and corrected, because, you know, turning in for safety that and eliminating, by doing that, eliminating the variance as well, so.
One of them, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, it seems, I think you were going to be stuck with needing a variance by and large, whatever you were trying to do. All right, so if Alan was satisfied, and I was satisfied, and Ms. McIntyre was satisfied, are there any?
Also satisfied.
All right, any further questions, comments, concerns from the board? Then now, I think that if it's, perhaps I will close, is there anyone in the gallery that wishes to be heard on this matter? See? Yes, sir.
My name's Cliff Corry. I'm in the 334 Osgood Street. And it's been a long time trying to remember what I was going to say. Nevertheless, nevertheless, I live across the street from the LaFons, a little bit closer to North Andover High School. Perhaps in my driveway, if this structure is allowed to be built, I would see the northern corner, perhaps, of that structure, probably not even the working end of the garage door. We've lived on Osgood Street for twenty-two years, across from the LaFons. They've been here for five generations. In anything they've ever done to their property, whether it's a Christmas tree wreath, or a paint job, or working in their gardens, they've only, only improved their property in anything they've ever done. So if I have absolute trust that this project would be done tastefully, it would be done within the law and would look great in our neighborhood. So I urge you to approve it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Cheryl Bruce, 326 Osgood Street. And I actually live right directly across the street from the LaFond house. And we, Osgood Street gets very busy with traffic. We were told when the high school was going to go in that they were going to look at the traffic plan and open up different gates, but they didn't. So Osgood Street gets very busy. So sometimes when we come home, we backed in, we have to back into our driveway across the street, and we use the LaFons driveway. So I really hope that they get their garage, because if the cars go in the garage, that'll free up their driveway for us.
I think that's the first time I ever heard something like that. I like it. That's awesome.
I can do it one better. Teresa Mendel, 339 Osgood. And I'm going to look at this thing. And I have no issues with looking at it. I can't wait till it goes in because I see it as a win for me. Right now, I have a problem with people parking along the fence of the LaFons, and that's my driveway. I have to back out. I rent a lot of cars, I take trips. When I rent my cars, they're big, and I'm not a good driver of big cars. And it really freaks me out when there's people parked behind my driveway and I have to back out. When this thing goes in, there's going to be a space they won't be at. So I can back out into their driveway, as she was just saying, and I'll be able to get these big cars out. The other thing I'm thinking is great about this is that when the plows come through, they're going to now see that driveway over there and maybe plow a little bit more on my side than they used to before. Because right now, they usually, they would plow all their side, and I would end up having to, you know. So this is a win for me, so I'm just letting you know.
Thank you. It occurs to me that with all of these people sharing in the benefits, they may be willing to share in the costs.
I was going to ask if you still wanted this garage.
You're giving up your driveway?
Yeah.
If you have room for one more comment, I spoke up on an issue that wasn't even in my business, because I didn't live out there. So I'll put my two cents worth in. I'm Daniel Day, still. 294 Pleasant Street. I am not a direct abutter to Jim and Lisa, I'm two houses away from them. But I do obviously have visibility of their, back of their house from my backyard, my bedroom window, so I would have direct access and direct visibility of the garage they're going to build. And I just wanted to speak up on their behalf. In fact, when they first came to me and said, well, I want to build a garage back there, I said, well, what took you so long? Why did you wait? But they showed me their plan, in fact, their original plan, which I looked at, which they used to actually maximize the use of their backyard with the angled garage that they gave them more room for, for aesthetic gardening and landscaping and shrubbery and what have you. Actually, a little more access off of Phillips Court straight into their garage. But they explained to me that that did not exactly meet with your approval, and they went back and did the work they had to do to come up with something better. But, you know, they only have one direct abutter to their property, and that's Alan, who shares the property line with them. And everybody else are indirect abutters. You know, we have view of their property and share the same roadway with them, but I don't think, other than the one woman, Mrs. Donovan, that Jim mentioned earlier, I don't think there's anyone living within the affected area that has any objection to what their plan is, is to put a garage there and have the ability to get one of their vehicles out of the weather and off the street during inclement weather and what have you. So I think that with the people I've talked to and what I've seen here is that the, at least in the immediate area, there is no objection to what they're doing. And I think we all are in agreement that whatever they do is going to enhance the neighborhood and be favorable to all of us, so.
Thank you. Any further questions? Comments for the board, from the board? Anything else to add? Okay, perhaps?
I'll make the motion to close the hearing.
I'll second.
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous, the board shall deliberate.
Entertain the motion?
Do you want to entertain? I think there's probably one thing, one thing that I do want to add on the heels of the neighbors that have come in support. That kind of commentary just shows the kind of community that you guys live in and that you have built kind of together. To be able to get folks to sacrifice essentially the entirety of their evening just to say thirty-five seconds worth of words in your support is just, to me, is an extraordinary thing, and it makes a lot of my job, frankly, quite easy. Because it's awfully hard to sit here and oppose something that you have put an awful lot of thought, awful lot of time in, and which your neighbors are not only in full agreement with, but have taken, again, the time out of their lives to come and say so before the board. So that, I think that's the only thing I really had to add. And with that, then I'll ask if there's a motion.
I will make the motion. I'll make the motion to grant the variance for the petition of James LaFond. That property of 329 Osgood Street, map 0095, parcels 0046, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in the R4 zoning district. Only one variance is going to be, is requested now for section 7.3, table 2, of the zoning bylaws for one rear setback in the R4 zoning district to construct an addition of a sixteen-by-twenty garage. To the existing home, rear setback is ten. The table is thirty, that we need is twenty feet. I don't think that's right.
Yes.
Ten, oh, okay, so you need twenty feet. And I'm going to reference the revised plan drawn by Daniel Johnson, dated 27/18, and the architectural designs by Jane Griswold-Ridosia, dated April 2018.
I have a recollection from Evan Weiss, Chair and maker of the motion, that there was some discussion last time about tying the four-inch drainage pipe into the town drainage, and that you guys were willing or going to be tying this in. I think I'd like to add that as a condition, if it's, if you'd so entertain it.
With the condition of adding the drain, the drain water?
Four-inch drainage pipe into the town.
Okay.
System.
Yep.
Is there a second?
I'll certainly.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So that is indeed a unanimous approval.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Have a good one.
This is psychology. Have a good one.
Have a good one. Listen, I'm trying to be nice, so I don't become mean.
With that, we have one more matter on the agenda, and it is the petition of James Downing at 21 Easy Street.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board...
Wait, we have to open that meeting.
Oh, sorry. New to this.
Mr. Clerk, fire away.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing of the town of Osgood at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, September 11, 2018, at 7:30. To all parties interested in the petition of James Downing for property at 21 Easy Street, map 38, parcel 166, North Andover, Mass. in the R2 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 7.3, table 2, dimensional requirements for one side setback in the R2 zoning district to construct a thirty-five by eighteen-foot deck to the existing home. Side setback is twenty-two feet. The required setback per table 2 is thirty feet. The relief of variance needed is eight feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 to 4:00 p.m., Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and Friday from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. And that's official.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, thank you. I'll keep this short and sweet because we've all had a long evening. My wife and I have removed...
Just your name and address.
Oh, sorry. I am James Downing from 21 Easy Street.
Brilliant, thank you.
Our wife and I have torn down a unsafe structure, a ten-by-twelve deck that was attached to the home originally. Part of the process we went through was how can we increase the entertaining space? Ten by twelve, once you get a table and a girl on it, not a whole lot of room for much else. So what we proposed to do, and in the plan that you have in front of you, is to extend it out to the side of the home. We have taken some privacy considerations into consideration, and the deck that we're proposing is ground level, so it's only, call it, ten inches off the ground, so. And the perimeter on the north and east side is actually, there's a privacy fence, so the deck would go up and about the privacy fence, so the structure would not be visible to anyone unless you were actually in my backyard or in the home and saw it out the The reason that we went through the process to request the variance was cutting the deck off for the required thirty-foot setback left a weird triangle shape between the deck and the fence. The ground underneath the deck is not level, so it would have required something just to make it aesthetically pleasing, in all honesty. So that's the, you know, the reason we came to the board. And we feel that the, sort of the reason that this is all coming about is, as you can see from the plot plan, we have a very, I'll call it, unique-shaped lot. Kind of seems to be the common theme of the evening, but, you know, had this been a traditional rectangle or square, I don't think this would have even been a problem. And where the existing structures are located, including the pool in the backyard, there was really no place else to go to meet our goal of extending the entertaining space. We had considered doing just a concrete patio there, felt that the deck would look nicer. I don't, I'm not even going to pretend to know the rules. I don't know if that would have changed the need for a permit or not, but so be it. You know, this was all just an aesthetic reason, you know. And doing the deck off the other side of the house, which we did consider briefly, but requires relocation of heating and doors in the house, including the air-conditioning condensers, and the cost would have just then been completely kind of out of the scope of what we wanted to do. So, kind of, that's...
I'll ask the first question, that's partially somewhat irrelevant. Is the pool really shaped like that?
Yes, it's called a lazy L.
Lazy is one thing.
Yeah, personally, I can't stand it because, an aside, getting a solar cover, any sort of cover, it now is a custom shape, it's not a rectangle. So, yeah, that's...
So that's really the, okay.
That's really the shape of my pool, yes.
And again, why is it such a deck like that? I mean, if you made it straight, you wouldn't have to be here.
If I, so if I made it straight, you're saying, on the side with the setback?
Yes.
Yep, so the current dimension of the perimeter, where the perimeter lines are, is a six-foot privacy fence. So cutting the deck, and it's going to be ground level, so cutting the deck back, you still have the fence, but now we have this eight-foot distance between the end of the deck... deck and the privacy fence, which underneath it is, you know, it's unlevel, it's roots, it's rocks, it's all kinds of stuff.
But you're going to have to level it any way to put a deck in.
They're going to put the post, so they're just going to dig the posts and build it up. They're not going to, it's going to be up like an inch off the ground, so it'll be a step up from the existing concrete for the pool.
I just find it odd that you really don't have to be here if you just straighten it out and just, I mean, I understand you have your right to come here and-
Right, yeah, no, and-
I don't know why anyone would put themselves through this.
And I completely get it, and I will tell you that everyone that I've told what I'm doing goes, why are you doing this? And it really came down to, you know, we've only been in this home for a few years. We bought it three years ago. My neighbor who's next to me bought his two months after. We, but we plan on this being our forever home, like I don't ever plan to leave, so it's one of those things, like this is something that we really wanted to do. We didn't want this weird rock or, you know, I don't even know what we would do with the space. Obviously, if you guys don't decide in our favor, we're going to have to figure out something because we still want to put the deck in this general configuration. If we have to cut it back, we have to cut it back and figure out, you know, what we do and what we can do, given, you know, what can be permitted in that. Again, that's not something that I'm an expert on by any means, but it was really just to, for aesthetics in the backyard, just to have it be like a continuous deck to completely enclose that area.
And match the, I missed the pool shape.
Yes. The lazy L, you're going to have a lazy-
Nothing on Easy Street is easy. It's just-
I have a question for you.
Yes.
So, your backyard is not at all observable from your cul-de-sac.
No. You can see, just, you can see the privacy fence because it goes, you know, from the back of my driveway, but that's all you can see.
And what is behind your backyard?
It's, mosquito brook runs back there, so it's conservation. The conservation has already signed off on this, so that wasn't, we're well within 100 foot, I believe it's 100 foot from that, because it's the pool, and then we have a living space, and then the privacy fence continues because we have the pool, so obviously keep that completely enclosed. So it's all wooded. You can't see the houses that are behind us at all.
And so what you're confirming is unless you invited me into your house or opened the fence gate for me, I would never even see what you have in the backyard.
That is correct. The only person that would is my neighbor, who's here today.
Tonight.
Giving up his night.
Today, this evening, giving up his night, yes.
You owe him a couple of years, no?
I already asked him, I already asked him what kind he likes for being here. I think he's going to speak for me, I don't even know, but. The fact is, he's here, so that's all that matters.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
All right, is there anyone in the gallery who wishes to be heard on this matter?
See, we have fun at our board. We laugh.
Only in the punchy hour.
Hey, Jeff Hard, 26 Easy Street. I live next door to the Downings. Yeah, I want him to just come and support him. I mean, the fence that's there, I wouldn't even, if he put a deck on, I probably wouldn't even know, because I wouldn't even see it. I mean, the way the lots are and our yard is, it's very, we don't even see that area anyway, so I have no problems with it being less than 30 feet, no problems at all.
He's the abutter of the Thomas.
I'm the direct abutter.
Understood.
Plus, I have two high school boys, so I figured he may owe me at some point, too.
Some pool usage, unless you have one of your own.
So, yeah, I'm, for the record, I strongly advise you approve his request.
Got it.
Brilliant, thank you.
Is there any benefit to you?
No direct benefit, but-
Just use of the pool.
No, he has a- We have a pool, too.
Anything further from the board?
No, nothing.
Is there a motion?
No.
Make a motion to oppose the public hearing.
A second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, it's unanimous. Any deliberation, or are we moving into a motion?
I-
Motion.
I make a motion. I make a motion that we approve a variance for, that we approve the variance pursuant to section 7.3, table 2, dimensional for the sideline setback in the R2 area to construct the 35 by 18-foot deck to the existing home. And I'd like to mention a plan written by Robert Edward Grover, dated 7/9/18. What else is in the-
20? Revised.
Revised.
Revised, 7/9/18, right?
I think you want to mention that it's property John James Downing, for property at 21 Easy Street in the-
This potential is property owned by James Downing at 21 Easy Street, map 38, parcel 166, in North Andover.
Bless you.
I will second that.
Motion made and seconded. I'm not going to bother with a roll. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimously approved.
Have a great night.
Thank you. And so, there's nothing else, right?
You need to make a timetable next time.
Stick to it.
Yeah. See what happens?
See what happens.
You didn't make a timetable.
I think that's it. Six and seven, there is nothing. Is there a motion, unless there, anybody has something to say? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And second, a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no, and we are unanimously adjourned. Thank you.